All right, the webinar is now live.
Diva, I understand that you knocked it out of the ballpark at the BSBA Conference, the School Board Student Representative Conference. I got screenshots of you and your colleagues at the conference, so great job.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it went really well. I was so happy to see like so many student representatives from all over Virginia. It was really nice.
Yeah.
Oh, I want to see pictures.
Right.
Yeah, that's great.
And we had another one of our students today on a panel from Charlottesville High School, Jamais Lynch Jr. So Charlottesville has been well represented during the conference. And Dr. Atkins, let us know once you get our gift from the early bird session. I don't know what we're getting, but once we get it, let us know.
I was waiting for them to announce your award. I didn't hear them announce it.
No, 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 no.
What gift?
Wednesday, the early bird session, the Charlottesville City School Board had the most representatives in attendance. And the early bird session was sponsored by the Virginia Lottery. And whatever the gift is, is going to be delivered to the office of the superintendent. So once you get the gift, if you would let those of us that are on the Charlottesville City School Board know what the gift is, we'll be very happy.
I will be. I will absolutely let you know. Congratulations.
Wow.
Well, congratulations to you for allowing us to register to go.
Oh, that's a thank you.
All right, everyone, I'm going to press the Go Live button so that Facebook has a chance to catch up and that we can be ready to start at 5:00 if we need to. So we are broadcasting live in the next 30 seconds or so.
Thanks, Pat.
All right, I see us live on Facebook, so that feed is successful. And.
Thanks so much.
Yep.
Okay, let's see here. I guess we'll call the meeting to order since it's now 5:00 o'clock according to my Chromebook. So we're going to start with a moment of silence. Keep, get, let people catch up. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll do a roll call of board members. Ms. Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Present.
It's Bryson Morseburger?
Present.
Dr. Krab?
Present.
Ms. McKeever?
Here.
Ms. Purrier?
Here.
Ms. Torres?
Lisa, you're on mute.
I know, sorry. Yes, I am here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
And Ms. Kadari?
Here.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to mention that this is Thursday, November 19th, 2020's School Board Meeting. We are conducting this meeting electronically in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And for those who would like to participate, we can of course always accept emails at schoolboard@charlottesvilleschools.org. We are live streamed, of course, on Facebook. And we have two public comment periods during this meeting, one at the beginning and one at the end. We do ask that everybody keep their comments to three minutes. And so now we're going to go to the approval of the agenda.
Move for approval of the noted agenda?
Second.
Okay, Ms., are there any comments or questions or alterations or anything about the agenda? Okay, we'll go ahead and call the vote then for the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Hi.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. We, the next item on our agenda is comments from members of the community. The Charlottesville City School Board welcomes comments from the community. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you state your name and address when you are introduced for the record. Mr. Cuomo, we have some people who are registered to comment. Thank you very much. If you would like to make a comment, Mr. Cuomo says to please raise your hand in the Zoom tool or type a comment in the chat to let me know if you would like to speak. So I just lost my pen, but I'll find another and then we can go ahead and begin. I will be keeping your time and you will hear terrible noise at the end of the three minutes. And that would be your cue to, to stop, please. Okay, who do we have, Mr. Cuomo?
First, we have, the name on the screen is Richard Fierro, and Richard Fierro can unmute it this time.
Hi, Mr. Fierro. How are you? Welcome.
Thank you, Richard, A25 Prospect. Thanks for having me. Thanks for doing the public comments. I appreciate y'all's service to the community and I'm grateful for all the extra time and energy y'all put in this fall and summer with all the craziness going on. You know, as everyone is well aware, the nation's COVID numbers look pretty bad right now. It's sad to see how wearing a mask remains a political issue. I'm grateful that the Seville community has been, for the most part, united and wearing masks, caring for the health of the whole community. Even the students at the Little Abundant Life Virtual School have been diligent to wear their mask every day. According to the recent article in Seville Tomorrow, it seems like that is the main contributor for Seville's relatively low COVID numbers. With that in mind, I have five requests for y'all to consider. One, when we vote tonight, please base your decision on when to provide an in-person education option on the local COVID numbers, not the state or national numbers. To determine tonight what the threshold is for returning to an all-virtual education once there is an in-person option. I've often heard a week of 5% or higher thrown out as a tipping point. Whatever the threshold is, please make it clear and official so that families with students benefiting from in-person school can better plan for a potential transition to virtual instruction if rates rise locally. There will probably be a lot of people tonight speaking about their desire for everyone to remain virtual. I'm glad those families have the means and flexibility to make virtual learning work, but I urge you to resist the temptation of letting them speak for those who do not have that flexibility, those means, or the access to support their children with virtual education. Thank you for taking the time to hear from everyone through the various surveys these last six months. Four, I also encourage folks to avoid publicly requesting UVA students not come back to school in February because I have a lot of friends and neighbors who provide for their families through working for hospitality at UVA. And they're good folks already making less than they deserve. And just like you wouldn't appreciate people advocating for you to be laid off from your job, I don't think people should do that with theirs. And lastly, UVA students are coming back in February whether UVA invites them or not. So let's focus on offering ideas and suggestions and working together with UVA to improve their systems instead of fighting a battle we can't win. As y'all vote tonight, just please base your decision upon the scientific knowledge that we have about the virus and how children develop and learn. Please base your decision on our local numbers and not numbers elsewhere. Please keep in mind the families and students in Seville unable to make virtual learning work. We love y'all and we're grateful and thankful for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Fierro. Who's next, Mr. Cuomo? You're muted, Mr. Cuomo.
Sorry about that. We have Manuel Lerdo. If I'm not saying that name, last name properly, I apologize.
Close enough. Thank you very much. And thank you for meeting and all of your work on this, both the staff and the board members. It's really, really great. I'm commenting on the proposal for instruction, in-person instruction that was contained in the Binding Intent Questionnaire that parents just returned. I'm the parent of two Charlottesville High School students. I live at 329 Parkway Street. I think the proposed plan is bad for two major reasons. The first is that moving to in-person instruction flies in the face of all the current national and state trends regarding COVID-19. While our very local numbers appear better than the rest of the state, we are in fact connected to the rest of the state and we are very dependent on those numbers. We are in the worst period we've seen yet with COVID, and there are many good reasons to think that things will worsen before they improve. While there may be enough available vaccines for all by the fall of '21, no credible expert predicts substantial improvement until, at the earliest, the late spring. Increasing in-person instruction before a vaccine is widely available places faculty, staff, students, families, and the Charlottesville community at much greater risk. That's the first reason. The second reason that I oppose the current plan is that the proposed plan would give 90 minutes, once a week, of in-person instruction for each student in each class. The cost, inverted commas, of this would be three days of asynchronous instruction. My CHS students, who agree on very little amongst themselves, are united that the asynchronous learning days are far and away the weakest link in the education plan that they are receiving now. Though they wish they could have more in-person instruction, they agree, and I think they are right, that the downsides of the proposed plan's three days of asynchronous instruction vastly outweigh the benefits of one day a week, 90 minutes in person for each class. They would rather keep things as they are, both for health and educational reasons, and I strongly agree with them. I hope the School Board does not adopt the proposed plan and retains the current model. Thanks very much. I'm done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Who's next?
Next on the, we have Polly Clark.
Okay, Ms. Clark, you have three minutes.
Polly, you are unmuted, so just check your microphone.
Oh, yes. Hi. Actually, so I, my login didn't work. My name is actually Maria Stein, and Polly gave me her link. So, yeah, actually, I live in the county. We opt in. My address is 954 Canvas Back Drive. So I am the parent of a CHS student, and first of all, I would like to thank you all for your service, especially because when you signed up for this job, this is not what you signed up for. So, so my family, like so many other families, are trying to work our way through this potential switch of programs in 2021. So the first of my questions is, and it's not, I have asked it and it's not been answered at the school level or the board level up to this point, is I am wondering about the decision, why the decision to go to a hybrid model is being made as if all the schools in the district are monolith, despite the very different developmental, educational, and childcare needs of the different ages of students and the very different models to address the in-person schooling for these different levels? So that's the first question which frames this for me. And the other one is about the fact that there is no way, families haven't, not been asked to rank their options that they have been given. And/or give, or there's been no opportunity to give feedback. It's been made clear to some parents, but not all, that if we choose the virtual-only option, we do not have the option to later choose in-person. But that the opposite could be true, so that we could move from in-person to virtual. So there are families like my own who are choosing on the intent form to go in-person, even though it is not our preference, for fear that we will get locked out if we change our minds later. The other thing is that in, around the intent form, Dr. I ran two meetings last week for CHS parents, and he gave out information that I had not heard at the board meeting. I had not heard from the PTO meeting. It was not available on the website, video, or emails that had been sent out from the district. The information was extremely helpful to me, but it was just before the intent form was due. And there were very few people on the calls, either Wednesday and Thursday, but people at that time did not know what they were signing up for. Including, there were people on the call who had already filled out the intent form saying that they wanted to continue with virtual because what they understood was that they thought they were signing up for the current virtual option. So I guess one of my thoughts is that, is that the intent form does not answering the question the board thinks it is. What people are doing, like myself, is we are gaming the system. So again, my family, my daughter is afraid to go back to school and, but we put that because we wanted to leave our options open. So my thing is, I don't think that the board has actually asked people what they wanted. I would recommend that you include, actually ask a question, that ask people to rank their preferences. It would be, you know, continuing with the current virtual model, you know, going in person or going virtual with the new model. Because every single family that I have talked to, oh, thank you.
Who do we have next, Mr. Cuomo?
The next person on the attendee list with their hand raised is Jessica Taylor.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Board, Dr. Atkins. My name is Jessica Taylor. I live at 1016 Hayrake and president of the Charlottesville Education Association and a proud first grade teacher of 14 amazing Clark Bees. I want to begin by acknowledging all of the complicated work, challenging conversations, and difficult decisions that have taken place since the reopening of schools became a consideration. Already, teachers, parents, and administrators have had to make incredibly stressful and difficult choices about what school will look like for their students, their families, and themselves come reopening day. This is an incredibly layered process whose success hinges on the communication, clarity, understanding, and trust among all of the stakeholders. There has been a breakdown in communication and clarity between the division and educators requesting ADA and virtual teaching placements. Educators who submitted paperwork should receive acknowledgement of receipt without having to make numerous follow-up inquiries. One-way, one-sided communication between employer and employee is poor practice in the best of times. But when people are left wondering if they will have to make a choice between their health and their job, it is unacceptable. There has been a breakdown in understanding between the division and educators requesting ADA and virtual teaching placements. One CEA member was given the choice to provide face-to-face services for a student or resign. She chose to resign. That is not understanding. That is not what we are told that CCS, CCS is involved. The CEA asks that teachers are once again taking, the CEA sees that teachers are once again taking an inordinate amount of risk in this process requesting ADA or virtual teaching placements. Clearly communicating what we need, understanding that decision-making takes time, and trusting that our medical histories are being safeguarded, and more importantly, that we are being believed. We are asking that as crucial stakeholders in this reopening process, that our behaviors are reciprocated. Communicate with us consistently and clearly. Understand that we are people with our own health and families to look after and protect, and trust that we are giving all that we can personally and professionally to every student every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Who do we have next, Mr. Cuomo?
At this time, there are no other attendees with their hand raised, so I will wait for your lead and give you an update when you ask for it next, but right now, there's no other hands raised. Oh, well, there's, somebody who already spoke has their hand raised, and there's a second opportunity for speaking in the, later in the meeting.
Yeah, we typically do not allow for additional comments or more than one, three-minute period per person in each individual public comment section. We have opportunities. People can email us or they can, you know, come up again at the end of this session. Thank you, Manuel. Okay, so I'm going to give 15 seconds. If anybody wants to hum, should be over in a minute. So, I mean, eight seconds. So anybody else want to raise their hand? Okay, good. So I'm going to, anybody else waiting, Pat?
There's nobody else at this time.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at this time and reiterate that we do have public comment at the end of the meeting as well. And we're always open to school board, emails at schoolboard@charlottesvilleschools.org. So feel free to comment at that point. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment. So the first actual item on the agenda is the move to increase pay. So Dr. Atkins said you want to introduce this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Renee Hoover is going to speak to us about how we'd like to increase the salaries of our custodial staff and some of our support staff in order to make sure that we can remain adequately staffed to provide services.
Good night.
Good evening, everyone. We are making a request to increase the hourly pay for custodians and nutrition workers to $15 an hour. Our current rate is $9.75 per hour. The substitute rate does not, the current rate does not align to the pay schedules for the custodians and nutrition workers.
Hi, baby. I am so sorry. I was like writing a speech that I had to give.
Hey, Jessica, we can hear you. Jessica, please mute yourself.
I gave it.
Jessica.
We're trying.
Thank you, Pat.
I'm trying to get her on the screen. I'm not seeing her.
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Hoover. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Per, you may remember during the budget season for FY '20, we raised the pay schedules for custodians and nutrition to the living wage of $15 an hour. The budget impact to raising the pay rate to $15 is $47,250. The budget would handle this from hourly pay that we're not currently paying out in other positions and areas. This request would, would help us to attract and retain substitutes for, because the custodial and nutrition jobs. And it would help us align our hourly rate with the schedules. And it would also go forth and help us fill these critical positions in this time of COVID. Are there any questions?
Hoover, can I ask a question? Is there any other category of worker that is currently under $15 an hour besides substitute custodians and substitute nutrition workers?
Our secretary, our substitute secretary, and our students, our students that would work for us on an hourly basis.
Okay, thank you. Can we stop sharing the screen, please? Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Hoover? Great. Anybody have any motions or action or?
Yes, I move that we approve the increase in pay for substitute custodians and nutrition workers to $15 an hour.
Second.
Ms. Hoover, I would love it if we could have a financial impact for next month of, around secretary, you know, if we wanted to, if we also wanted to do, increase the pay to living wage for substitute secretaries and students, if we could.
Will do. We'll bring that back.
Or for next, I mean, whatever you guys think is best, but I don't want any categories of employees necessarily being, you know, working for less than $15 or we could make that happen.
Open.
Any other comments or questions? Great. Go ahead, Ms. Green. We'll go ahead and take a vote.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
Thank you.
So 6.2 is return to face-to-face learning. See if we can make that just as quick. I'm just such a dumpster.
We will make our presentation.
Dr. Atkins, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. Ms. Thacker, we're ready. Want to thank the board tonight for convening this meeting in order to receive important information that the board will need as they deliberate on our return to in-person learning, return to face-to-face learning. As I think about our teachers and our staff, I want to say thank you to each one of them who have diligently dedicated themselves to delivering the highest quality virtual learning program that we, we could have imagined. So thank you to our teachers. Thank you to our parents. We know that it has been difficult for everyone to navigate these times, but together, we're finding our way through a very difficult situation. And so as I think about our teachers and what they've been doing and the courageous attitude and disposition that they display time and time again in their delivery of instruction and their interactions with our families, a quote that really exemplifies that positive attitude and their ability to be adaptive is a positive attitude doesn't always guarantee success, but a negative attitude certainly does affect your ability to adapt. The positive attitude of our teachers and our staff has been what has been critical in our ability to adapt to an ever-changing landscape with COVID-19. The purpose of tonight's meeting, it's always good for us to frame what we're doing and why we're doing it. The purpose tonight is to report to the board the CDC metrics for the last seven days, also to give the board the analytics from the student and family survey, what process we used and what are the responses, also to look at the staff survey process that we use for gathering information, then how our transportation department is preparing to transport our students once the board makes the decision to return face-to-face in-person learning. We are requesting that the School Board take some action tonight. Tonight, we asked the School Board if it would consider taking action on the continuation of our preparation for in-person instruction to begin January 11th for our pre-case six students and then February 1st for grades seven through eight, and that is to continue the preparation for that. And then in December, December the 16th, we would ask the board to come reconvene and to review the CDC risk metrics and then take a vote, take action on return to in-person learning, and if appropriate, to maintain the January 11th and February 1st timeline. We also want to recognize that the board does have the right to make any adjustments to the dates that have been proposed for in-person learning based on the CDC metrics, risk metrics. So we want to thank the board for everything that you've done. So we want to get started with those presentations. Beth Baptiste will review the CDC risk, risk metrics. Beth Chuck will review the students and family survey results. Keith Hubbard, the staff survey process and responses. And then, we have Mr. Williams, Garland Williams from Transportation, Director of Transportation, that will talk about our preparation for student transportation. So, we'll start with Beth Baptist.
Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Atkins, you've seen a chart very similar to this in previous meetings. This does show the CDC metrics for the last seven days. And as a reminder, the numbers are for the case incident rate per 100,000. We have 50-ish thousand here, so it does look different. We don't have 268 cases in the last 14 days. That is our standardization. We have had 129 cases in Charlottesville over the last 14 days. And total for Charlottesville, since we started this, we've had 1,769 cases and 144 cases so far this month. Our positivity rate has remained low. It's at 1.3%. And we do know that it is somewhat skewed and can't, don't know exactly how skewed by some of the testing that's being done at UVA. But we do know that what is being reported is 1.3%. And then that last column takes the last seven days and compares it to the previous seven days to look at the change in percentages. And you can see over the last seven days, we've had a little bit of fluctuation. Some days, we were higher than we were the previous seven days, and some days, we were lower than we had been the previous seven days. But if you look to at the incident rate, we have seen an increase over the last few days from 205.7. Once we get under 200, we would come out of the red. But you can see, we have kind of moved back up solidly into the 200 since then. So, I would ask if you have any questions about the metrics.
Thank you, Dr. Baptist. Beth Chuck? And you're still muted, Beth.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that. Leslie, if you don't mind moving on to the next slide, thank you. I'm just gonna very briefly review the process. We opened the survey on November 3rd. In addition to the, that was online and with an announcement to families and some new information on the website. Then, we presented paper copies in the various languages in, beginning on November 5th through the food distribution sites. On November 10th, a team of volunteers from across the division in different roles, but led by the family engagement coordinator, visited nearly 800 homes to give a flyer to kind of, as a reminder, and to remind people of their options for getting help, including a telephone number they could call and do the survey over the phone, things like that. And then the final sort of due date, we extended it from the initial Friday afternoon because we realized that materially, there's no difference between a family returning a form on a Friday evening versus a Monday morning. So, we shifted the due date to Monday morning, the 16th. A couple of the big ideas, again, I think we talked about this last month, but we did distribute the language online and in print in six different languages. All the languages were used at least once. So, that's, that's a fun fact that we didn't sort of waste our efforts. And we did have a nice story about the folks who visited the community. A girl ran out when she was flipping through the papers and saw the language Arabic on one of the pages and was very, just happy to see her own language, see herself represented in the paperwork. We had a multitude of ways to return or submit the form, including online and texting and calling, a lot of different ways. I won't read through that whole thing. One, one kind of positive I would like to relay is that we had fewer than 50 returned via paper. And I think that's really a testament to just how widespread IT has been in making sure that all of our families and all of our students' families have good Wi-Fi connections right now. And it's also just a word of appreciation to the community, to all the partners, all the people, the neighbors who helped, and all the families who chose to go online versus paper, knowing that if it's on paper, somebody was gonna have to retype that information. So, I think that's a big success from this process. And then even now, schools are still following up. I cut the data off this morning at 8:00, but I know I got several reports from various principals about folks who had called the school or who had filled it out online. So, I know that those numbers are going up even now. So, in terms of the response rates across the elementary schools, we saw about an 89% response rate already. At Walker and Buford, as of this morning, it was about 80%. At CHS and LMA, and I just grouped those together. At this morning at 8:00, it was about 75%. So, overall, we had about 83%, which I think in the middle of a pandemic with everything else going on, I just think is a point of celebration. In terms of the actual choices, what we see is a pretty consistent number, sort of in the mid-60s. So far, and again, these numbers are still coming in, so I don't wanna report on anything as final. But so far, the range, it goes from 62% to 71%. And if you recall, when the principals presented back in October, they had mapped out ranges, what it would look like to staff and use their buildings for ranges as low as 55% in person, all the way up to 85% in person. So, at 65, 67, 63, 66, those kinds of levels, or up to 71 or thereabouts, we should be within the range for the, for the facilities. Now, that hinges on the staff forms that Dr. Hubbard will be talking about as well. But at least in terms of what's theoretically possible, this is within the realm of what they were planning for. And I think that's just the same information presented in a different way. So, I know this summer, when we were looking at some of these things, we were, you all were curious about the impact on various groups within the school division. So, I did break out the completion rates in various groups. You'll see that our white families had the highest level, but aside from that, it was pretty even throughout. And at our lowest ranges, you know, 74, 75% is still a big majority of folks who even by this morning, and again, those numbers are going up, had completed. And then in terms of who's choosing to come back, you'll see that our families who are, or our students who are actively in the ESL program, they lead the pack at 80%. And all the other groups are really pretty consistent in their, their choices. And as a side number, I know we've heard, I personally have heard different numbers from different divisions about what to expect when, when families have this kind of choice. I've heard numbers, I think in recently, in some schools, divisions in Virginia, maybe more like a 50-50 split. Throughout the summer and earlier in the fall, the school divisions we were hearing from told us we would see this sort of 66-33 kind of split, about a third wanting to stay at home and the others coming in. So, that, that, I think we're in good company across the state with these percentages. And I think that's the end of mine. If you have any questions before we move on to Dr. Hubbard, I'd be happy to answer.
I believe that we're going to ask questions at the end of, if you guys don't mind.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. The one slide that she kind of skipped over was actually a slide that.
I can't hear you, Lisa.
Sorry, the, the one slide that you skipped over, Beth, was actually speaking to the in-person versus online.
I'm sorry, I thought that was the same information twice, but Ms. Thacker, if you'll bring it up, I'm happy to kind of explore it a little further.
It was that one. Wait, go on forward.
This is the same data, one's presented in a table and one's presented in a chart, but.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them at the end.
Thanks, Beth. Dr. Hubbard?
And Keith, your mic is still off?
Oh, I'm sorry, normally I.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Dr. Atkins, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, members of the community. It's my pleasure to present this data tonight in regards to our survey process and the responses that we collected. The process was pretty straightforward. We opened up the survey for all employees starting November the 6th. They were communicated via email that the survey was open. Responses were collected in between the 6th and the 13th. But I would also say that the survey is still open for anyone who wants to continue to give us their information. We started disaggregating the data by school and by district on the 16th. By category and by, by school on the 16th. And we actually shared that information with building principals in a spreadsheet for each one of them, specific to their school on November 17th. So, if you move to the next slide, please. So, right here, you see the staff intent survey results. And on the right-hand side, what we're so encouraged about and so thankful of is the response that we had from our teacher community. We had 96% of our teachers complete the intent forms. So, we currently have 470 teachers and 452 completed the survey. We have 115 instructional assistants and 94 completed the survey. Building administrative staff, 63. And we had 54 complete the survey. And you can see the numbers in the, in the, in the, in the bar graph which state the percentages. That is so encouraging because as we're looking to really make the best decision that's in the best interest of our staff and our students, looking at everyone's health and welfare, we were thankful for this data because it allows us to make a very informed decision as we go forward. The one caveat is the division administrative staff. We've been working in the building since March 13th, so a lot of us didn't fill out the survey. I'm guilty of that. I didn't complete the survey because I'm here every day. So, I, you know, I just thought that was part of it. But as we move on, I'll break some data down further. What we are doing is, we're going, we are in the process of analyzing who did not complete the survey. And we're going to reach out to every individual who did not complete the survey and encourage them to complete it because we do wanna hear the voice of everyone. So, we break the survey analysis down a little bit more for teachers. We have teachers in pre-K through six and teachers in grade seven through 12. As you can see by the graph that's illustrated in front of you, the numbers and the percentages for the choices. So, every teacher had the choice of choosing in-person, online, both in-person and online, and wherever I'm needed most. And one of the areas that you'll see remains very consistent is, we have a lot of teachers who have said, wherever I'm needed most is where I'm willing to go. And we're so appreciative of that because that allows us to meet the needs of our greatest stakeholders, our parents and our, our families, and also keep our staff mentally healthy and safe because they're making a choice in which they feel comfortable coming back in this environment. So, if you go to the next slide, please. Same data for grade seven through 12. Once again, you see a high need of, a high level of wherever I'm needed most. Online, about 35%. And the numbers are right there on the, on the right-hand side of the slide. But if you combine the in-person, wherever I'm needed most, in both in-person and online, in this area, you have about 65% of our staff that would, that are willing to do whatever's needed to meet the needs of our students versus in-person or face-to-face instruction. And then another 35% for online. So, it's great the way that's lining up with the way the data that's been collected from our parents at this point. So, that's, that's very encouraging as we look to make some really, really tough decisions in this unprecedented time that we're all in. Same data for instructional assistants, which was another category that we had broken down. Wherever I'm needed, both in-person, online, online and in-person. And as you'll start to see a theme that the numbers are not, there's not a lot of variance in the numbers. It's, it's very encouraging because it gives us the flexibility to be able to really meet the needs of all of our stakeholders. If you move to the next slide, please. Building administrative staff, this includes our principals, assistant principals, administrative technicians. The smallest number here is online. The majority of them are willing to come back either in-person or wherever they're needed most or actually work both in-person and online. The division administrative staff analysis, I'm sad to present this one because I'm very competitive and we're at the bottom. So, we'll, we'll do our best to, to get our numbers up. But we're all dedicated and we're coming here every day to meet the needs of our, our community and our staff. So, I wanted to spend a little time, because we've, we've covered this quite a few times, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, or FFCRA. Just to give you an idea of what that data looked like. All of these are people that have made medical requests. And, and we understand, this was very tough for people to send this information in to share with us their, their medical needs and, and how they didn't feel safe and, and how, how could we help? And so, FFCRA allowed us to either approve them for, for leave based off of childcare, a medical condition, or a closure. What helped us out was, this, this act only gave us 12 weeks, but was in our best interest since we were in a predominantly virtual environment, really not to act on a lot of the requests because everyone was already working predominantly virtual. We actually received our first request in July. Had we acted on that first request in July, that individual's leave would have expired by now. And we're still not in a clear place as to what our model is gonna be going forward. But then there was a situation that arose where we decided we needed to, for the best interest of students, start bringing in some of our students with identified special needs for some face-to-face instruction. And we started receiving requests then. And we received 10 requests from instructors or instructional assistants that was in, in line where they would be going back face-to-face. We did respond to those requests when we had all of the information that was needed. We have, and when I say all of the information that's needed, that is the medical or either the childcare closure documentation that you needed to send in. We're still awaiting information from five people, but we have received the full packet from five people. And we have acknowledged all five of their requests and have approved their requests. So, we've approved all the requests that we have, all of the documentation for. And as we receive the documentation for the, for the other five that have requested, we would definitely process and approve those as quickly as we can. As soon as we get it, we look at it and we then communicate with the staff member. But I know it's a, I've talked with a lot of people that have to make tough decisions and it's really a tough time. And we're doing the best we can with being understanding and sympathetic towards them. And just want everyone to know that we're working as hard as we can to meet your needs because we understand that everyone needs to be treated with grace and patience and humility. And we're doing all of those things. And we're trying our very best to meet the needs of everyone. If at any point, we haven't done that, charge it to our head, not to our heart, because I feel the same fear that some people fear. I look at the numbers that other people look at, and we are very, we wanna make sure we're taking care of our staff in the best manner possible. So, just know that's what we're working to do in the Human Resources Department. So, if you move to the next slide, please. I wanted to give you all this information because when individuals were able to choose online, it then took them into a separate area so we could understand why they were making that choice. So, I broke it up into three categories. It's either high risk, a preference, or provide care. If you were in a high risk, which was the largest number of people who requested online teaching, that was 57.6% or 98, I mean, 99 individuals. And either they were a staff member who is in high risk because of the CDC guidelines, or they were caring for an individual at home that's at high risk under the CDC guidelines. The second category was simply preference. That just said, I prefer to teach online or work remotely. And then that, you see, that's 27.3%, which equaled out to 47 employees. And then the last one was providing care. It was either providing childcare, or they were a caregiver for someone who's high-risk in their immediate family, but did not reside in their home. So, we compiled all those numbers. It came up to 172 responses total. One response is not listed as the childcare facility. You can see a little small sliver of blues, like an aqua blue. sliver of blues, like an aqua blue. That should be in the provide care, which would take that number to twenty-six. I apologize for that oversight. But we did look at that data as well. So I do apologize for that now. But, um, it's very, we, we now have this data. So we, we, we really know what our people are feeling in a non-threatening way and we can then make decisions that will hopefully meet the needs of all of our stakeholders. Help our families feel, help our, our staff members feel safe, help our family members feel safe. Help everyone feel safe in this very dangerous and unknown society that we're in right now. And that is our number one job. So if you go to the next slide. So then I will give you some next steps that we're going to do. We're going to continue to support teachers and staff as we navigate the impacts from COVID nineteen. We know there are ninety-eight employees who haven't submitted the intent forms. And our job is to now contact those ninety-eight employees. I would tell you fifty-two of them come from the D-division administrative offices. So they'll be easy to contact. And we've provided principals with updated school-specific data so that when they're looking to, uh, put their classes together and make decisions, they're having good data. And then we're going to continue to provide staffing support to schools as needed. We're here to help. We're moving as fast as we can. And I just want everyone to know from the human resources department, my team is working hard. We are, we are meeting with people. We're counseling with folks. And we understand that it's tough. We understand it's difficult. And we understand your pain and we feel it with you. If I had the ability to grant everybody their wish, the type of person I am, I would grant it. But I don't have that ability. But just know that I'm working hard with my staff and leading my staff to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our employees. And I thank you for the opportunity to present this.
Thank you, Dr. Hubbard. Now we have student transportation. Kim Powell.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, before I turn things over to Garland Williams, Director of Transit for the city, who's graciously agreed to join us as a panelist this evening. I'd like to present some, the transportation data that came back with the intent forms that we have so far. So Leslie, if you could advance to the next slide, please. So what you'll see here is that, and again, remember, we have to think about our bus transportation strategy by level because of, you know, we transport all the elementary students during one timeframe to work with the elementary schedule, then, then the middle schools, if you will, Walker Buford is another level. And then there's CHS, LMA. And then we're considering a separate level for pre-K as part of solving this puzzle, but that's not really addressed here. We can, we'll address that otherwise. But for these levels, for each level, based on the intent, intent forms, you'll see that there are nine hundred and thirty-four total requests for bus transportation. The good news, if you will, or a bright spot is that of that nine hundred and thirty-four, three hundred and seventy-three indicated that they cannot get to school without bus transportation. And there's a footnote at the bottom of the slide that based on our current bus fleet and most importantly, the available drivers, we project we can transport around two hundred students per level. Now, based on the fact that the guidance allows for members of the same household to, to sit more than one person per seat. Um, we, in certain cases, you can get more than two hundred students on a bus, but in general, for planning purposes, the, the number is twenty, um, about twenty students per bus or two hundred students per level based on our current availability of drivers. And so the good news is if you look at the can't get to school without bus transportation in that column, there's no level at this time that has over two hundred in it. Of course, we do not yet have all of the intent forms um, in hand. But, um, it's important that you just kind of see where we are with these numbers right now. And with that, I'd like to turn things over to Mr. Garland Williams, who's with us tonight from City Transportation and People Transportation.
Thank you very much, Kim. Um, I wanted to kind of basically walk the board through a couple of things first. Um, if you're there to the next slide, I wanted to kind of give you a highlight as to what our organizational chart looks like and it gives you a flavor for the positions that we have and availability. So uh, what you have here is showing that we have fifty-eight FTEs that are funded through um, the, uh, funding that comes from, uh, Charleston City Schools. At this point in time, we have fourteen bus aides that are funded through the money that comes from this, uh, the school system um, of which there's four vacancies. Of the group that is from twenty to twenty-nine drivers, then we have ten that are, are funded in our budget. We have six vacancies. Um, of the thirty to thirty-nine, we have eighteen of them budgeted. We have five vacancies. We have nine relief drivers and we have six vacancies on that, on the admin side. There are seven funded and there's two vacancies. If you extend to the next, um, slide for me. Part of what we wanted to do is show you where you stand in your budget. You, the school system gives over two point nine million dollars. Um, and that is, uh, uh, the, the total budget is broken down by personnel operating in your capital portion. Right now as where we stand, um, we're spent about one point one million dollars of your actuals at this point in time. The projections show that we're going to spend about two point seven, which would give us a delta of about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars available at this point in time. Um, if things stay the same. So if you go to the next slide, one of the things we were talking to with Kim and, uh, Dr. Atkins is, if you go to the next slide for me, is how do we get to, um, adjusting our service model to be able to transport potentially more kids? As we're working through this modeling, getting in this survey, we're going through um, each one of the exercises and allowing us to see how many children that we can transport at each one of the tiers and the levels. Um, we're updating those numbers now and I've gotten, I actually literally just got an email from my, my team. Um, so they're, uh, Johnny on the spot. Um, we're working through this model and we're seeing that once again, to reinforce, uh, the state only allows us right now to transport twenty kids per bus. If we go and want to increase our numbers, one of the ways to effectively do it in the quickest fashion is to hire contractors, subcontract out a portion of, um, the service. So each one of the subcontractors can take an additional twenty kids. Um, what we initially projected was we may need about twenty. Um, if we got twenty subcontractors, that would increase our transport capacity about four hundred additional children that would be able to get. So how do we get to the number of what it would cost us to operate or get a, a additional, um, twenty drivers in to transport? So what we have done is actually reached out to four different vendors. And this is the one that basically has come back to us and said that they have, one, the availability of drivers or they can get the, the, the number of drivers that we needed. And this is the cost, um, uh, model that they have, uh, uh, designed at this point in time. Twenty-five dollars an hour, forty hours a week for nineteen weeks. That basically takes you to your two nine-week periods of time and a one week of training for us to get them to the point where they'll know each one of their routes to pick up all the, all the students. Twenty drivers is based, uh, for that period of time, nineteen hours, twenty drivers is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that nineteen weeks of, of operations. Also, there's an overhead portion from, um, each one of the, um, vendors that wanted to do it. And the lowest one was about twenty-five hundred dollars, um, per month. Um, that gives them overhead. They're, they're getting the drivers. They're doing all the, the back paperwork and everything. So it basically is, um, a turnkey operation. Uh, so at this point in time, if you add the, the twenty drivers um, for the nineteen weeks, that's three hundred and eighty plus the overhead for the actual, um, company to do the work is three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. There'll be a funding gap, yeah, at this point in time because there's only a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, about two oh seven. Well, I got good news and that, um, looking at the numbers that have come over from the survey at this point in time, it looks like we may be able to reduce the number of drivers by five. So potentially just having fifteen. Uh, that would reduce it by another ninety-five thousand dollars, bringing down the total delta to about a hundred and uh, twelve, almost a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that we need to, we need to find to be able to do this potential model. Now, this is not the only thing that we're looking at doing. Uh, we're actually trying to explore other avenues as to whether there's, um, individuals in the region that could help us. But the problem is the availability of getting to DMV, um, getting the testing done um, to get them the S endorsement. Um, and that's a portion that, uh, we, we've been looking at DMV and they're kind of backed up. COVID has created a little bit of a havoc situation and not allowing them to do as much testing as they want. So, uh, the availability of trying to get folks in, even if you have a CDL to get the S endorsement, looks like it's like February. So my recommendation at this point in time to Kim, to Dr. Atkins and to the board is if we need to increase the numbers, um, we would need to potentially use the subcontracting model to, to allow us an opportunity to safely transport the, the number of kids. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate it. All right. And, and, uh, Ms. McKeever, uh, we are at the end of our presentation. I want to thank all the staff members um, for their presentation. And also I'll make some comments at the end of the board meeting about, uh, how we handle our personnel when they're coming through, making requests for either online or teleworking.
Dr. Atkins, um, thank you to all of the staff who spoke. And, uh, no doubt there are some questions and I would love to get to them. So who would like, okay, Ms. Bryson Morseberger?
Okay, I have, um, four questions to start with. I'm just going to read them real quick so that the next people will know that it's coming. Uh, so for Dr. Atkins, I wanted to know, or, um, anybody else who wanted to do it. The, about the, the speaker was talking about what schedules look like and what parents are voting on for virtual now. What virtual will look like if we go back and, um, face-to-face. And she was saying that, you know, what you're voting on is not what we're doing right now. And so if you could explain the difference between what virtual, wh-what those differences are that she was addressing, the doctor I talked about on the call, so that everyone watching and listening knows. And then for Dr. Hubbard, the FERC, the twelve weeks of paid leave. Do you, I know it expires in December. Does that mean that the employees had to use all twelve weeks by December or they just had to request it by December? And on a normal year without FERC, how much leave do teachers and instructional assistant staff accumulate? And then for the transportation, at a previous meeting, uh, with the city council, we talked about we're not running full bus routes. So there was some savings on fuel. So between the savings on the fuel per month, since we're not running all the routes and the vacant positions that are open, can we use some of that money to offset that cost if you have to hire the contractors? And those were my questions for now.
Yeah, that was only three.
Oh, sorry, three. Oh, the Dr. Hubbard question had two in it.
Okay, I'm great. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you so much. Uh, the, the first question about the difference between what, uh, online learning looks like now opposed to what online learning will look like, uh, if we come back in person. Uh, one of the may, and I'm not quite sure all of what, um, Dr. Ira Zara shared with parents in his presentation. But as we've been working with the principals to lay out a matrix for what a day would look like, one of the major changes shifts with the online learning. Currently, students at the secondary level, they start their day at twelve-thirty and they go until about four-thirty in the evenings. Uh, if we switch to, uh, in-person learning, uh, the students who are still virtual would align with the schedule for the students who are face-to-face. And face-to-face learning will start earlier in the day. Um, and one of the models that the high school is, is looking at right now is putting cameras in the classroom with the teachers so that the virtual student will be in the classroom, uh, virtually with the students who are face-to-face. Uh, meaning that they would start their day potentially at nine o'clock as opposed to twelve-thirty. Uh, they would have learning there and they would continue their online presence uh, for a longer period of time to around two-thirty, three o'clock and potentially until four o'clock. They would go through an entire instructional day in a virtual environment for the days that their group would be, um, pairing with the face-to-face model. That's one of the scenarios that the high school, um, and, uh, some of the other schools are working on now. Um, what we can do is bring back to you what it actually looks like, a, a day will look like in, in at each of those levels after the principals have had a chance to look at uh, who's requesting in-person as opposed to, uh, virtual on the student side and on the staff side. But that, the length of time is one of the major differences.
And then could you also address the asynchronous face-to-face time versus non-face-to-face time? Does it, will you get less in one model than you get in the other model or?
You will. Once we come back in person, the ratios there will definitely change. And I'm going to ask Dr. Odie, if you can, uh, uh, contact one of our principals to see if they can jump on with us. And if they can, that's great. If they can't, that's okay too. Um, so that, that the ratios will change, uh, for the screen time for students and for the face-to-face, the, the time with the teacher uh, in the online model, that will definitely change. The asynchronous time is where the student has, um, this teacher has given them an assignment and it's independent work. Uh, that will ex, that will grow. Uh, it will almost double what the students are having now.
And you're gonna, you said we'd get a, a clearer picture in December at that meeting?
We can. Right now, the principals are working, uh, looking at how many students are coming in, the teachers. At the high school, the complicating factor for them is that their teachers have to be certified in the subject area in which they're teaching. So they're trying really hard, um, to make sure that they have that certified teacher and to provide for the needs of the students who are coming in the classroom, those are who are online. Um, and without overburdening the teacher. Uh, because we won't necessarily have a teacher that can be in-person and that our teacher who is in that same certification who can be online. We won't necessarily have two separate teachers. So we're working through that. At the elementary school level, uh, they're working very hard to try to come up with a schedule that will keep as many students as possible with the teacher that they currently have. Uh, we know that that won't always be possible, but our principals and teachers are working really hard right now on seeing how often they can make that happen. And that's not just at the elementary school level. It goes all the way up through, uh, the high school.
And in response to the, to the leave question you had, um, all of our full-time employees, um, earn a day and a quarter per month of leave. Um, if you're asking about its family medical leave, um, with the, um, all employees can receive twelve weeks of FMLA with qualifying, um, conditions for medical um, or taking care of a family member, uh, per what the board policy is. In addition, we, um, you can get an extension if we have extenuating circumstances. You just have to write a letter and we have to get approved for that. But employees who are full-time, who've worked in a full-time capacity for the previous year are all, um, entitled for up to twelve weeks of FMLA for qualifying reasons. And the examples of qualifying reasons are, um, serious health conditions or like either caring for a family member with a serious health condition. So I, I hope that answers your question.
Uh, thank you. And then is the, I, FMLA is the leave that you have. So it might be unpaid if you don't have enough leave on the books. It's the family's first one. Does it provide paid leave or is it still unpaid leave?
It, it, it depended with the family first. The first two weeks were at, um, full-time pay. And then the next ten weeks were at two-thirds of your pay. But you could elect, if you had enough leave, you could elect to use your leave to make up for that one-third. So you continue to receive full-time pay over ten weeks. So it's a lot of moving parts. It, it really depends.
Thank you.
Hmm?
Uh, um, Dr. Hubbard, just to follow up, uh, one of the questions that Ms. Bryson Morseberger asked was about the, do they need to use all twelve weeks by December thirty-first? I assume not, given what you're under the FERC.
Um, like, I, I said earlier, we would operate with grace and some mercy and common sense as well. They, uh, under the FFCRA, it, it is supposed to be used up by December thirty-first. But by all means, if there are extenuating circumstances, we meet with people individually and we, we, we work to meet the needs of our, our employees either by guiding them in the direction to use FMLA, um, if they have a qualifying condition. So I hope that answers your question as well.
Yeah, I was wondering about the legal, but that's helpful as well. Okay, is that, um, and so the next one is for Mr. Williams. Um, the question I guess was related to the savings.
So if I understand the question, it was part of about, uh, fuel savings. Um, right now, what I gave you was, uh, what we believe is the magnitude of costs. Um, we're hoping to be able to put some savings from fuel on the table. But at this point in time, I, we do not know what that number is and I can't confirm it because we are still because we are still taking the vehicles out and they're being driven on a daily basis to keep them, to keep them up, so to keep their maintenance up. So there may be a small portion, but I didn't want to basically give that number to you and then it not materialize.
There's also the meal deliveries, which are something different that are, that's using five buses, five days a week.
Ms. Powell, I believe also we have transportation of our special needs also.
Of course, yep.
And with respect to vacant positions as well, is that what was also included in the 184,000?
That's where the majority of the savings is from.
Okay. And Ms. Keever, Dr. Ira Zara is on the line, so he might be able to give us more clarity on what that instructional day would look like and the differences.
Correct. Dr. Atkins, Madam Chairboard, board, good afternoon.
Here is Eric for jumping on so fast. Thank you.
Not a problem. You're the kids in the background. I apologize. I believe the question was referring to, and Dr. Atkins, you already, you already hit on that. One of the major changes on the proposal from the secondary team would be the switch from our current schedule from 12:30 to 4 for live instruction to the nine to four for live instruction. And so that would change, that would, and you were, everyone was correct, that would be 90 minutes for one day a week per class with students coming into the building twice, twice a week or live instruction twice a week. But it would be 90 minutes as opposed to the two times a week for 45 minutes that we currently are operating right now. So I don't see a large change in the amount of minutes. But obviously, the school day would look a little different because we would be going a full day from nine to four as opposed to our current model of 12:30 to four for live instruction.
Can you clarify, one of the comments, a public comment was about, about some of the presentations that you made were just like information that nobody had ever heard before and it was just super helpful. And I just wondered if there was, if you are aware of might, what might be helpful for us? Just one.
Yeah, nothing, nothing we presented wasn't either on the school board website or from the presentation. That was presented from the, from the COVID committee. I think as far as the high school specific, it was those specific questions regarding the, the daily schedule. I know that there was a sample schedule that was in the presentation. Correct me if, I mean, I believe so. There was a sample schedule. It was nine to four. But what I did say was, you know, the details have not, you know, the specific details have not all been worked out, but it would be a nine to four according to the proposal one day a week for 90 minutes. So I think that's the only thing, you know, those are the only questions that we were presented with. Just some clarification on the days of live instruction or face to face and the amount of hours within the day.
Dr. I, while we have you, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I mean, I feel like all of us are gonna have questions that are probably going to relate to Dr. I. So if you don't mind sticking around a little longer, so we, do you mind?
I can hang out. Yep, not a problem.
Because I, everybody's gonna have questions that might touch on what the secondary approach is. If you don't mind, Ms. Torres.
Thank you, Dr. I. So, and I don't know that you can necessarily speak to Buford, but when, whether this pertains to both Buford and the high school. We did receive some, some email comments from parents, just, you know, and I guess if you could just confirm. So the asynchronous time will increase for, for kids if we adopt this model, correct?
I would say what was presented, you know, what's in the, what was in the presentation in the proposal would be, yes. So what, what you would see is, you would see an additional day of asynchronous instruction, which means, just in layman's terms, that's not live instruction. So as Group A is, is faced, is face to face with live instruction, Group B would be asynchronous, doing independent work, doing their, you know, their homework. Everything that they're doing now, let's say on a Friday or during their morning time, would, would now be on a full day. So right now, the asynchronous time is in the morning from nine to 11:30. So what's happened is those morning slots that were now asynchronous are moved over to, to a full day. So you would have Monday, if your kid was in Group A, if your student was in Group A, you would have a virtual instruction and then you would have your, your asynchronous instruction the next day. And Fridays on the sample schedule. And someone jump in, if I am wrong on that, I don't have the presentation pulled up, but I can get it pulled up. The Friday is also similar to what we're doing now with an asynchronous day on Friday as well. So you would have two days plus the asynchronous day of asynchronous instruction.
Dr. Ira Zara, we're gonna pull up the, the matrix that you, you've completed. We have that and we, we can display. Thank you.
Thank you for helping out. It was, it's hard to explain without a visual here. So if you see Monday, and let's just, let's just pretend we're in Group A. So we do have a Group A, Group A in person. So they will have four blocks at about 85 to 90 minutes. So they would be in person from nine to four. In addition to the face to face in-person Group A, you will have a virtual Group A as well. Students that are in Group A that have chose, that have chosen the virtual model. So they will be zooming in, as Dr. Atkins said, to those classrooms to get that instruction. So they will follow basically a full day schedule through Zoom, going to their classes. We realize that the, the screen time will go up, so we will be working, if this is approved or a version of this, we will be working to make sure that we do include some movement break, movement breaks and some breaks from the computer for the kids that are at home. But you do see Group A in person, Group A virtual. And while that group is live, you will have Group B doing their asynchronous independent work and activities. So it will flip. So on Tuesday, so inherently, the schedule that we presented, Group A would go through their odd blocks, 1, 3, 5, and 7 on Monday. Group B would then come into the building. They would be in person and virtual, same as Group A. They would go through their 1, 3, 5, and 7 periods as well, with Group A then going to asynchronous. And that would flop back. So on Wednesday, Cohort A would come back into the building and they would have 2, 4, 6, and BKT. While Group B is asynchronous. And Thursday, it would flip back. Group B would have 2, 4, 6, and BKT with Cohort A being asynchronous during that time. With Friday being similar to what we're doing now with more office hours during that time.
Dr. I, I, you really did lose me there. I'm so sorry. Can you tell me how you all came up with this hybrid schedule? Because this seems super confusing.
Yeah, this was part of, this is what the COVID committee, when we, the secondary folks came together, that this is, you know, this is the high school. Basically, what we've done is the classes, in order to meet the guidelines for social distancing in the classroom, we had to divide each class up by at least 50% to make sure that if all 100% of our kids wanted to come into the building, we would still have to split them in half. So you have Group A and Group B. So Group A and Group B could be, let's say, in PE 9, Group A and Group B. All of that PE class cannot be in the building at the same time, in the same classroom at the same time. So therefore, they're just split. So Group A and Group B are still part of the same class, but they need to come, they need to come in the building at different times. So that's why you see that, that's why you see that split.
But can you do the same, can you do the same, like if you have a cohort in PE 9 and, you know, you have maybe on Mondays and Wednesdays, they, Group A is asynchronous, I mean, is live streaming that rather than, I mean, there's, I mean, I know there's not cameras in every room. Anyway, I'm sure a lot of people have a lot of questions. I just, just wondering if there's any other thought to maybe like using the cameras and technology so we could have less asynchronous time for high schoolers and more like live stream or other alternative, so.
I would say, you know, right now with looking at our schedule, we're always open, you know, if there's a way that we can balance the, you know, the, the face to face and the asynchronous. The reason we chose block days is we're trying to limit the amount of transitions within the day. And we're trying to, to, you know, if you have a singleton day, you're looking at seven to nine transitions. If you have multiple lunches, you're gonna look at, you know, another two or three transitions. So a blocked schedule does allow longer time for its teacher to be in the room with those students with less transitions and less contact and less movement within the building. And we're also cognizant that for a teacher, if they tried to zoom in another 15 or 20 students into the, you know, the 15 they have in front of them, that presents some real pedagogical dilemmas in that classroom. It makes it very difficult. And what we don't want to do is sacrifice the high level of instruction that our teachers are doing right now and, and really make it more difficult to teach. So the, the, the thinking behind it was if you had 15 kids that are in Group A with five choosing to do virtual, it would be easier from an instructional standpoint to work with the 10 in the room and the five, you know, the five on Zoom that are zooming in and, and work with that group as opposed to having 15 in front of you and another 15 on Zoom. Does that make sense? That makes it, that makes it difficult. So we did, and that was part of the group with the COVID secondary team as well. So that was discussed and there were teachers a part of that group as well. So that was a lot of input into that. And again, all of this is proposed. You know, like I said, you know, the tweaking, we still may need to look at that once our numbers are final as well.
Great, thank you.
Could I, could I just jump in on this? I guess, just to follow up, I guess what we are hearing, the concerns that we're hearing from the Buford and the high school, from those families have to do with the loss of quality. And I think a lot of people have found, you know, the virtual synchronous to work really well. The way it's been working, they've been pretty pleased with it. And with, with this new model, you know, I think people are afraid that they're actually losing that quality instruction. So that even if a student is virtual and I guess what they would be doing is zooming into a classroom where there are other kids present and they're just watching. I, I think that people are, are worried about that that won't actually be a quality teaching, you know, experience for their students and that then the asynchronous learning, I think for a lot of families has been the least effective, you know, and that's increasing quite a bit. So I think that's where I think people's concerns are coming in, the loss of quality. So that's not exactly a question, but I don't know. Yeah. I don't, I don't know if there's any way, you know, if there's any, what we can do. This is so hard to figure out, you know, it really is. But I, I think just to focus on, you know, what people are really concerned about, that there's a loss of something that we've built that's been really good, you know, and that we're sort of doing away with that.
And I, I do want to say, because, you know, just so it's not lost, that, that our, that our team at the high school has done, our teachers and counselors have just done incredible job. If you look at that instruction, it is, they are really working hard and, and it has been just really just incredible to watch, incredible to, to, you know, when you go through those classrooms. And I understand the high level of instruction and, and, you know, change is difficult. I, I understand that the asynchronous piece is, it, it is difficult. We realize that, you know, when, when our students are not face to face in front of our teachers, you know, able to ask those questions right away, that's not what, you know, that's not always the best case scenario, obviously, for, for many of our students. But, you know, I think taking into consideration, trying to get students safely into the building. I think what folks don't realize with that master schedule is we run 500 classes, you know, really, when you think about it, we have 100 teachers teaching at least five classes a day. That's 500 classes in a day at Charlottesville High School, including all of those, you know, AP classes in engineering and orchestra. So I, I, I don't know, and we are open. Again, like I said, that was proposed. There was a sample schedule in there, but really trying to make sure that kids are in the building, that we don't overwhelm our teachers. At the same time, we balance the rigor of instruction. You know, I think we can continue to work to find, you know, what is that true balance as well. I think we can continue to, to work and tweak that. But the asynchronous piece will be a part of it. I don't think there is a way, you know, it's a piece of it now, you know, so I don't think there's a way to totally eliminate that, that piece. But we can continue to work hard to make sure that even the asynchronous piece is as helpful as possible.
Dr. I really appreciate that. I think it would be, you know, like I said, when parents talk to you, they, they really are relieved and understand like some of the, the, the dynamics there. And I think that you're flexible and that you have, you know, that this is, I would like to know how much time do you need, like really, to, to make it, like to get a schedule that like, that, you know, with the data that we have about students who want to return with input about the schedule and about kind of trying to minimize asynchronous learning as much, how much time do you think you need in order to make that, make that happen? Like, do you need like a month? Do you need 48 hours? Like, I know, do you need two months? What is an appropriate amount of time to, for, like, that you need? Like, because let's say, we, we're looking at February 1st for the high school. Is, you know, is that, is there a reasonable enough time right now to kind of understanding some of the current concerns that we're hearing? For you kind of go back to the drawing board and, and work through some of these questions?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to overstep my bounds by, by any means. But I, but I think if, you know, if we need to look at that and maybe present, you know, different variables, maybe, you know, or, or, you know, different tweaks to, to the schedule, I think, you know, we can start working on that, you know, immediately. We will have some more accurate numbers. I, I think that, I think the variables that can't change, we're prepared right now to, and I've got a plug in my computer here on the side here, so excuse me, I don't want to lose you all. We are prepared right now to, in the classrooms, to safely socially distance our students. The master schedule, what we're trying not to do is disrupt teachers from students because our schedule is so delicate with AP classes, engineering classes. There's one teacher in many of those programs. So we can't move sections like the elementary schools can. So what we want to do is make sure that the teachers have built those relationships. There's, in many cases, there are one or two teachers that teach the subject area. And, you know, that, that is a very delicate balance. What we can look at is time, we can look at, at that, knowing that if we increase transitions, we will lose instructional time. So, you know, we, you know, we are bound by the number of minutes in a day, but we can look at options. If, if that's okay with, you know, senior staff, to look at maybe different options, you know, within those constraints and see if there's a way to tweak it or if there's a way to deliver some, some instruction in, in a different way during that asynchronous time.
Dr. Craft?
Ms. Keever, we're encouraging the high school to go visit other programs. There are a number of high schools that are open around the Commonwealth. And the Department of Education has a heat map that shows all of the school divisions that are open, that are, have already implemented the hybrid model. So we're encouraging the high school to go visit some of those places or call, do a virtual visit, or actually go walk those hallways in order to get the gems from those, what they've learned from opening and, and bring it back to Charlottesville and make it work here.
And we'll be at a, another school on Tuesday just to, to look at what they're doing. And many, there are some schools in our area that have a similar schedule. We do have a seven-period schedule, which is, you know, unique in, in some ways. But there are some schools down in, in central Virginia that have opened at, at the start of the first, of the second quarter. And we have calls out to them to figure out if we can pick their brain to see with their hybrid schedule, how do they, how do they make it work with a year-long, seven-period schedules? Seven-period block, block schedules, so.
Great. Well, thank you. I mean, I want to just, I mean, without, you know, I know that there's plenty, plenty of board members who have something to say, but I want to also note that I appreciate you coming on to this call, Dr. I. But I think we're also hearing a lot of concerns around Buford's schedule. And so I appreciate, you know, because Dr. I is here, we're getting a deep dive into CHS. Is that, CHS is a hybrid schedule and model and being able to kind of offer these thoughts on them. But I definitely want to underscore that we've heard from Buford families as well about the level of asynchronous. And I'm much more concerned about asynchronous learning for younger students, probably more so than like especially 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, well, maybe 11th and 12th graders, anyway.
Ms. Keever, we also have, Dr. Turner has done a really good job in setting up also his hybrid schedule that looks very much like the high school. He and his team have been working very hard on their schedule. I just texted him. He's at the hospital. He has a family emergency. Uh, I've just texted him, he's at the hospital, he has a family emergency, so he can't jump on with us now, but he's spent. He has spent a number of hours with his team, just as the high school has, working on the schedule. And you can see that his schedule looks very similar to the high school.
Great, um, so I wanted to take away the share screen, even though it's very helpful. Um, and get back to, um, Dr. Craft, who has been.
Yeah, I just had, um, one more. One more, um, question just about this and it has to do with, I, you were saying that, um. Each teacher has to be certified in that subject in order to teach. I'm wondering whether there, under our current circumstances, unique current circumstances. Is there any flexibility there so that we could, you know, have teachers pitching in? In, in, in areas to increase the quality of learning, even if they're not, they don't have that certification? Can that be done?
That, that's, uh, currently, it's a requirement, those certifications are requirements. And, and we have not received a waiver. To have teachers who are not certified to teach those subject areas.
Have, have we asked? Have we ever asked, or do you know?
I don't know that we would want to, Dr. Craft.
The depth knowledge that's necessary for those subject areas.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know, um, okay.
Okay, so, um, again, I want to say thank you, Dr. I, I, I'm sure we're going to have more questions, so I appreciate you staying on for a little bit longer. And I also want to go to, um, so back to Ms. Torres, if that's, do you have more questions that you want to talk about with the presentation survey slash transportation? And human resources?
I do, I didn't, I mean, I was trying to think if I had anything else for Dr. I, I didn't know if we wanted to focus questions, um, but I can. Definitely regroup here, so I guess I am curious, um, based on the numbers of responses that we had from students. Um, who wish to return from parents who wished for their students to return face to face. If we had a breakdown, um, specifically for the elementary schools and what that looked like. Um, and if there were any elementary schools who might not be able to meet that, that need or that request. Based on either capacity, physical space and/or. Teacher staffing, if we've had a chance to look at any of that.
Ms. Torres, that's a great question. What we can give you are the numbers, um, that we've received from, uh, the elementary schools. Principals have that information now and they're trying to match up the, the requests from students and from teachers. To see how much of a match there is. Um, so, Dr. Hubbard, you want to tell us about the elementary schools and what that breakdown looks like?
Uh, you want me to give the specific numbers from the different schools?
Yes.
Okay, so when you're looking at a Burnley Moran. They have, uh, ten teachers who wanted to teach online. Seven that would do both. Nineteen in person and fourteen wherever. At Clark Elementary, you have nineteen online. Nine that would do both. Seventeen in person and twelve wherever.
Hi, 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 hi. Ms. Dr. Hubbard, can we just, can you just send us this email, like?
I can, I could send you this in an email tomorrow morning if you'd like.
I mean, I, I think if we're going to vote on, we need it tonight, but.
Yes, okay, yeah.
I, I think it's.
Okay.
If, if that's a will of the board, I mean, he could go through all of our schools, but that's a lot.
Yeah, I can send it to you. I'm working on it right now.
Thank you. I, I know that we also have that concern about the parents respondents as well. Um, so if Ms. Chuck would send us disaggregated data for that, for parents' responses, if we have that somewhere.
And then just, I guess, looking at that generally, I mean, are there any red flags or did anything, you know. Catch your attention as far as like a, a certain school. Uh, might be challenged to, to meet it based on, you know, the preliminary, the staffing numbers and, and what would happen? If, if a certain school, say, had a really, um, higher request for the. Family First Corona Response Act, you know, to, to be out. I mean, would we shuffle teachers or how, what does that look like?
Ms. Torres, um, last, uh, board meeting, we had, uh, Summer Thompson and Erin Kirchner. Uh, did scenario, uh, scenarios, staffing scenarios.
Right.
If fifty-five percent, sixty-five, seventy-five and eighty-five percent of our students were to return in person. And the number of personnel that it would require for all of those scenarios. Um, we certainly can bring that back before you, so you can take a look at that. Those are just looking at whole numbers. Now, what the staff is working on is looking at the specifics. How many teachers at second grade, uh, will they need at third grade? Because if one school has, um, sixty-six percent of their students indicating they want to come back. What's the distribution of that across grade levels? And once they have that information and then pair that with the distribution across grade levels for the requests for online or in-person. Teaching, we'll be able to give you more details about, uh, into the question that you're asking right now. But those analytics are still being done at the school level.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Dr. Hubbard, a couple of questions for you, I think, here. So of the, um, one hundred and seventy-two online requests that you, you presented in the graph.
I just want to just offer like a break, okay, Dr. Hubbard's back, I just, because we just asked him to send an email, so I wanted to.
Okay. Makes sense, totally makes sense.
I, I came back on to answer the question, I'm sorry.
No, 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 please, please do what you were doing, I, I'm sorry. I think I'm going to pass for now and, and if I can circle back.
Okay, um, Mr. Ray, I see you unmuted.
Yes, I did some, it seems like, um, some of the personnel orders, um, school. Questions have been, will be answered or, or asked tonight. I had a few more questions about the pupil transportation. And, um, and I'm not sure if Mr. Garland is still on, but. I saw that, you know, that they were charging twenty-five dollars, um, per hour. And my question is, I just think we want to make sure, because I know I work sometimes, that the worker will only get eight or nine dollars an hour. And so we just want to make sure that as part of that contract that they, you know, get whatever we, you know. I, I would like as, as much as possible, but I would think at least fifteen bucks, sixteen bucks an hour. Um, um, for that and, and, uh. We just want to make sure that, you know, if they see they're getting like, you know, drivers that we have now. That they say, well, you know, I can. I can re- resign from what I'm doing now and maybe go and make more money per hour. I just want to know where the contractors could be getting their drivers from, if they're coming from out the area and things like that, so. Um, and will we, will they be providing buses as, as well? Or is the contract for them to use our buses? And, and that may have been part of his presentation that I didn't catch. So I just want to know a little bit more about, um, what that contract. And I know that we don't have one with a specific one, is, you know, um, he's got bids or information from several, but just. An idea of how that would look like.
So, uh, I'm on, thank you. Um, so I wanted to, to, to get to the last part of your question. Is, um, one of the things that we're doing right now is really evaluating the, the three or four vendors that we've reached out to. And where we, where we are at this point in time, we, we're not able to really negotiate because we're not, we're just in this. We're in the fact-finding component of it, right? So the detail component will come when you tell me or we're authorized to kind of work through this model. One of the things that we, um, uh, I know there was concerns about the driver, potentially some drivers getting twenty-five thousand hours. And our current drivers do not. The difference is we're paying our drivers the benefit portion. So they are not being offered benefits as a part of this contract. So they're only coming in just to make the, the twenty-five dollars. There is no benefit package, no, no healthcare, no dental, no vision, anything. So that's where the difference is.
Well, well, it's, I'm sorry, but it's my concern that they may not get any of that and still get ten bucks an hour.
Like the vendor would get, uh, would retain the twenty-five dollars an hour and only give sixteen dollars an hour or whatever.
So part, part of where, um, this kind of goes back to the national shortage of drivers. Um, where we've reached out is there have been four vendors who have basically told us they can't do anything. And then we've got vendors that we've been in contact with, some of them have fallen out of it. Because other jurisdictions around the country are doing the same thing that, that we're contemplating. So when we're trying to potentially negotiate and dictate. What their pay structure looks like, we may not be able to get the drivers to actually be able to do our model. So I'm a little concerned about. If this was a different time and we were able to have put this contract in place earlier, we probably would have been able to negotiate. What the driver pay is and making sure that they get fifteen dollars or sixteen dollars. But if you want to make sure that we have the available drivers, right now, our main concern is having the contract to be able to. Um, guarantee that we have fifteen or sixteen drivers.
Understood. Uh, uh, um, if we get to that point, I think it should be part of the city's discussion. I think that, you know, we would be remiss if we got, if we got what we wanted as far as the number of drivers. And they're paid really low, they probably will not stay. So I, I understand the position, we don't have a, a strong hand here, but we, you know, just. As you're in the negotiation, if we get to that point, just can, consider that as part of your.
Absolutely, I, I think that is, uh, one of the prudent things, and when we go down that track, we will definitely. Um, do all avenues to make advantages for our drivers. But remember, these are temporary, these are only designed to be around here for nineteen weeks.
So in, in, in my final comment, um, and you may have, will be getting to it, is, um. Will they be provided in their own, um, buses or will they be using ours? I couldn't, I couldn't.
They're going to be using ours. We have the number, we have the number of vehicles and, and quite frankly, we want to use our own vehicles. And that way, the safety issues that we don't have any concerns about.
Good, thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Garland, if I may.
Mr. Williams?
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, oh, God.
I answered both, it's okay.
It's been a long day, okay? Don't even ask me my name, so here we go. Uh, first question is, how much turnaround time do you need to invoke a contract? With any of the people that have responded to your RFP? That's my first question.
So, thank you for that. What we've been trying to do is continue to negotiate bits and pieces of this behind the scenes right now. The, our best guess is two to three weeks is if that's, that's at warp speed. Um, to make it happen. Normally, the contract of this nature takes at least six weeks to kind of, um, put in place. But we're, we, we're continuing to move down the line and we're staying in contact with the vendors. To see if we can continue to kind of keep them on the hook and kind of continue to move down the, uh, the path so we don't lose the drivers.
So in that three-week period, there will be an additional week because you indicated in your presentation. That you need to have a week for these individuals to become familiar with the routes. And familiar with our, um, vehicles, is that correct?
That's correct, so, uh, let's separate the, the cut, the procurement piece. Um, happens first and then once that, uh, and once we turn them on, we say, okay, you, you're, you're our consultant. Or you're, you're our vendor, then they will start their process. Um, they'll come on board and then start recruiting, retaining, signing the contracts to get the drivers to come in. We need exactly, well, we wanted ten days, we've kind of been able to, um, basically put it down to about a week now. Um, where we can actually hopefully get them in, show them the Virginia process, because they may be coming in from North Carolina or wherever. Um, and make sure that we have the processes in place, so they know the particular routes that they're going to be on. So there's no delays when it's time to rock and roll.
Okay, so, next question in your RFP. You indicated that there is an overhead cost and that is an administrative cost that most grants have to sustain. I am presuming in that administrative cost, they will be responsible for doing the necessary background checks. And will they also, um, ensure that the drivers have, um, current CDLs? Because I'm not sure if, I would assume if you have a CDL, there's reciprocity between North Carolina and Virginia. Or Maryland and Virginia or DC and Virginia, so that is not going to be a concern of yours?
No concern on that portion and the background checks. Um, we, we will definitely work with them and that's part of the, the negotiations to make sure that the background checks are.
Okay. Last question. In your negotiations with your RFPs, do you have, um, minority vendors in that pool? Or is it because of our turnaround time, we were not able to, um, look at that request?
Uh, because of our turnaround time, we were not able to look at that request.
Okay.
We had to go for the ma- the major vendors who can do this nationally.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bryant, do you have a?
He, he, yes, the doctor is already still on. Is he, is he still on, Dr. Isar? I just had one question, I, I, um, I'm real clear about, um, the model. As far as, you know, the scheduling model, I just had one question, asynchronous learning, can you give me a little more clarity on that?
Correct, uh, just asynchronous learning in general?
Yeah, because I'm clear about, um, the, the, the model, other than a little more clarity on asynchronous learning when the other A and B are doing block.
So what it would, uh, look like in this proposal is asynchronous learning is just. The learning that's taking place without live instruction from the teacher. So that could be independent work, that could be in the activities or group work that need to complete. Because we need to maximize the instructional time when students are in, in the building with their teachers. Um, there's not going to be a whole lot of time for, uh, for that independent work. So what it will look like is similar to on our Fridays or our mornings now. That's the time where they'll get their independent work, their activities, their, um, you know. Classwork done basically during that time as well.
Is that done while they're in the building?
No, that would be done, uh, while they're at home, uh, during.
And how many hours will they be doing that?
It would be for three days.
Three days and how many hours? How many hours?
Uh.
Per day?
How many hours are we in a day? Sorry, uh.
How many hours per day, that will they?
Hours per day, nine to four.
Nine to four, okay. Okay, that explains, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, okay, so can I, uh, who else, um, has any comments right now? Okay, yes, Miss Bryson Rusper.
Sorry, can we go back to the COVID, the dashboard and the numbers? I was, um, for Dr. Baptiste, we were talking about the orange and the red and our seven days. I was just, um, um, can we just go back to that? So are we in the red in Charlottesville and does that mean we're above the five percent? Where are we?
We are in the red for the number of cases per hundred thousand population. Since Charlottesville doesn't have a hundred thousand population, they then do the calculation to standardize it across really the country. So it shows that we have had, under the standardization, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-point-one incidents over the last fourteen days. But if you see the second column, that is the actual number of cases we have had. So standardization, we're in the red, then I always do the actual number of cases. Because since we don't have a hundred thousand people, even though the standardization works. We, it makes us look like we have a higher number or percentage than we do. Now, the percentage that people talk about, have we gone over or under, is generally the percent positivity. Right now, we're at one-point-three percent positivity, which is low. And the one factor that we have to consider is some of the testing that occurs at UVA. And the one factor that we have to consider is some of the testing that occurs at UVA. The larger number of tests goes into our denominator, so it makes our percentage smaller. We don't know exactly how that number is skewed. But if we didn't have any of the tests that UVA does, then our positivity rate could be some higher. How high would it be? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know that it would be out of range that would change the color from green to yellow or orange or red. But right now, our positivity rate is one-point-three, which is under two percent. And when it goes beyond two percent, that's when the color changes.
So when, because UVA is theoretically, well, not theoretically, they're going to be done around Thanksgiving. So at our December nineteenth meeting, the, our numbers won't be including, they won't include the UVA numbers anymore. It might give us a clearer picture when we come back in December.
They won't be including as much testing, you're correct, because the UVA students do leave, you know, really this next week. Now, I don't know for sure how all of the athlete testing occurs, how much of that is affecting our numbers. We will still have, um, athletes, um, participating. So they still would be doing tests in December, but likely will not be doing as many tests. Like last week, UVA did over eight thousand tests. Some weeks they do six thousand, some weeks they've done five, but last week was eight thousand tests. So how many of those eight thousand counted in our denominator? We don't know. But, uh, you're right, though, the percent positivity could be affected by the semester ending at UVA. We just don't know at this point until it happens.
And let's just be super clear that the, um, uh, most of the eight thousand tests are on people who are presenting as healthy. I think it's a really important distinction with other health districts is we are testing an enormous amount of healthy people. Uh, or people who are presenting healthy. And so some, of course, may be asymptomatic, but, um, you know, a lot of the other health districts don't have this, you know, pool of healthy people being regularly tested to reduce their positivity rate. Right. So just as a, as a caution. So thank you for that. Can we take away the share screen? Did you want to follow up on that?
So one, just as a board, I don't know if this is to Dr. Atkins or to Dr. Baptiste. But we were saying that five percent, the, the earlier, um, one of the public comments was what is our threshold for when we would go back to virtual if we were in person? So is that the fourteen days with the five percent positive rate? Is that the number we're going by? Is that like from the state or CDC? Like, I just want to get an idea if you can.
Ms. Bryson Moersberger, um, once we get to, um, in the red with the incident rate and the positivity rate, then we're going to work with the, um, the health department, our local health department, uh, get guidance from them and work with the board um, as to what our next steps will be. So we'll bring a team together then to take a look at and to advise the board so the board can ask additional questions and make decisions about whether we return to, if we've come in face-to-face, whether we return to virtual learning at that point.
Okay.
To that.
I wanted to. Oh, go, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I was gonna say, I wanted to correct one error. I just said, I said, once we went above two percent in the positivity rate, the color would change. Once we go to three percent, it goes from dark green, which is the best, to light green, which is still good. And then once it gets to five percent, it goes into the more at risk. So it'll stay where we are right now, up to three percent.
And, and if I might add to that question about if there's an increase in in-person learning, what would indicate returning to virtual? What seems to happen with the school districts around us that are already operating in person, and this is Universal, Louisa, Green, all of them, is that when there's a case, what they do is they go through contact tracing and they determine if the transmission was in the school, if there's any evidence of transmission in the school or school division or not. And that seem, that seems to drive the decision across the state with whether or not they are advised to revert to virtual learning for a classroom, for a school, or for a district. So, um, it's really a lot of that is the contract tracing, I think, at that point.
Okay, I just, we were saying that part of our plan to return would be to have a clear threshold for what we would look for when we would need to transition, if we needed to transition back to virtual. So that, I just want to make sure we include that in the discussion.
And Ms. Bryson Moersberger, one of the other areas that we're going to be keeping a close eye on is, is even if we're not in the red in the incident rate or the positivity rate, if we have an outbreak in our schools. Depending on where the spread is occurring, that may also cause us to come back and ask the board, let's, let's move back to virtual learning. So it is situational. We will use the metrics, but we will also, um, use situations to help guide us.
Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, uh, if we as our board would be able to receive, uh, the COVID data um, more frequently so that we can kind of be tracking it ourselves, maybe once a week. Maybe you could send us, uh, you know, the chart, the chart that you showed us tonight. And, um, I, I feel I would be more comfortable, um, just having a little bit more information and, you know, more on, on an ongoing basis as we look at this.
Dr. Kraft, I update this chart every day about ten o'clock and it's a Google Doc, so I can share the Google Doc with members of the board. And then you can watch it nine fifty-nine to get to see when I get ready to do it.
That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Most of this data is publicly available.
Yes.
All of our information, um, and obviously something that most of us have been paying very close attention to, just for purposes of the public. Um, so, thank you. And who, who's next? Okay, so that means me. So, um, I just really cannot overstate how bad asynchronous learning is, period. I don't mean to, like, I appreciate everything that everybody's putting into it to try to make it good, but I have four kids here. They are doing fine otherwise, but that asynchronous day is always terrible and something they dread, no matter the age of the child. So I'm very concerned about giving that independence, um, to sixth through twelfth graders, um, or whatever age, seventh through twelfth graders, uh, for three days in the week. I think that just seems like far too much asynchronous time. I think that whatever needs to happen to minimize asynchronous time is what we need to do. Um, I'm I also feel, so that's one thing. So, you know, just if we need to invest in technology to do this, then we should invest in technology to do this. I don't think, like, if you have, um, you know, twenty-five kids or twenty-three kids, twenty-two kids in a class and one's in group A and one's in group B, and then you have group A on Monday and Wednesday in that class. I'm sorry, group, I'm sorry, you could do it every other day where you have the same class in the, anyway, I, I just, I'm not the educator, but it seems to me that there are other ways that might work. And I really want to emphasize at Buford. Um, because the kids at Buford are already, um, in a very tenuous age group. And I want to include ninth graders. And because our tenth graders didn't complete our ninth grade year last year in a normal way. So I really feel like from seventh grade to tenth grade, we have a real, um, issue with independent learning. Um, and I don't know that that's a reasonable expectation for that age group, given how tenuous their learning experiences can be. Um, so I would, I'm, I really like the timeline. I like January. Uh, I would like to maybe, instead of January eleventh, have it January eighteenth. Again, for two weeks. I don't know why. Um, maybe January relevance better. I don't, that, I leave that up to you guys. I think I like February first. And that, I also want to say that the board, if at our January fourth or at our next board meeting after the December nineteenth meeting, looks at the data and says, this is not, um, or the data is going in the wrong direction, which I fully anticipated doing, that we have to, we have to pull back. Um, so I don't, I, I like the timeline. If things stayed the way they are, I doubt it they will. And so I just also feel like it's a little bit. I'd like us to maybe set a more realistic timeline, um, given what's going on in our country right now. Um, and that is so, I mean, just so that work, so families can know that that's what we're going to be doing. We're going to be looking at that data. If we have to have a meeting January third or fourth, even though it's winter break, we're going to do that because we cannot have, you know, nine percent positivity rate and community spread happening in our community and then send our kids back to school. We have been trying to protect our community and you know, I, I just want to suggest that the timeline, um, may need to be adjusted if, uh, the, um, if our rates go up after the UVA students leave. Um, so I want to say that, um, I think uh, given what the transportation, I like, you know, Mr. Williams' suggestion uh, and the contract is, is a good thought. Um, can we, do we really need nineteen weeks? I mean, can we just see how it goes for the first month? With just the families who said that they, they need it no matter what to go to school. Uh, I don't know that, um, spending four-hundred-thousand dollars on transportation, when many, many, many families have said that they would make a very, you know, make a concerted effort to get their children to school. And there is wiggle room in that, in those transportation numbers that we saw. So, uh, I appreciate, you know, I, I think it's a great option, um, that Mr. Williams brings to us, uh, and, but at the same time, given that our parents have really stepped up to the plate and said, look, we'll get our kids to school somehow. And then we have a pretty, like, a, you know, reasonable number of families who say they have to have bus transportation that can fit within our current transportation, um, resources. So I would like us to consider that. And I mean, I have a, a, obviously a lot more to say, but, um.
So, so Jenna, Jen, I'm sorry, as quickly as you're talking, I, yeah, I, I totally agree that I think that no matter what we decide either this week and next week, I'm fully prepared to pivot based on whatever the numbers, you know, tell us type of thing. So I, I concur. I think that we could say we're going to start this January first. But if the number dictates, um, otherwise, we, we should, we should be prepared to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. And while I think the, um, I mean, if you just look at the numbers, well, I, I'm sure other people have questions and, um, thoughts, so I don't want to monopolize the time. I wanted to answer Ms. Kedari's question, which was that, is this model public? Um, which is something she asked in the chat, and I just want to say, yes, it was part of the presentation, um, a couple of months ago. Are we, I don't know, time is irrelevant right now, but, um, and I wanted to ask Ms. Kedari if she had any questions or comments that she wanted to bring to the table, because I don't, she's not on my first page, so I can't see her.
Um, yes, I actually do have a few comments from the student's point of view. Um, so what I've heard from, I actually have a couple of different points. And what I've heard from many, um, from some of the students from CHS is that families chose face-to-face learning in the form because they were afraid that they would not be able to change their decision from virtual to face-to-face. Um, the other thing is that students are, I've heard from many students that they're afraid that if they're online and are in the live stream with the rest of the classroom, with the rest of the face-to-face on class, they're afraid that they will not be able to engage or be included with in-person students. The other point I wanted to make that, um, about asynchronous is that during, um, BSBA conference that had last Tuesday was student rats from around Virginia. And I heard some schools, one of them being, I remember, was, um, like Loudoun County pa- of public schools, I think. And their schedule is, I'm not wrong, two days, one Wednesday, so in the middle of the week and the other Friday, is that they have completely off days where teachers are not allowed to assign any work, so to tell students to catch up any work or to kind of, um, you know, take it easier on the students because many, uh, students' mental health has been impacted negatively during this time. And so I was thinking maybe Fridays, that, which is an asynchronous day right now, to be completely off. Or I've also heard Dr. I mentioned that teacher, to, for teachers to limit assigned work, which is a greatest, uh, idea as well. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, um, Dr. I pointed out how CHS teachers have been doing a great job. Just wanted to say that, um, I just want to comment on that and say that probably I'm very thankful for all my teachers and everyone who's been trying to make this easier for students as much as possible. And we as students can definitely see how it has been hard for one, including the teachers. And we just appreciate everything that they do and all you guys. So thank you.
Okay, I would like to nominate her to be chair. Ms. Kedari, uh, excellent work. Appreciate your comments. Very well spoken and very well taken. Um, also, Ms. Torres, I wanted to get back to you because I know you kind of deferred earlier and see if there was any, um, Mr. Dr. Hubbard had sent out the, the numbers, um, and if you had any follow-up to all of that, I wanted to give you that opportunity.
Yes, well, thank you, Dr. Hubbard, for sending those. And thank you to Beth, who's, excuse me, sent out the breakdown um, of the student requests per, per school too. So we have all of those numbers. So I appreciate that. Um, and my questions to Dr. Hubbard, um, again, I apologize for throwing questions at you when we had sent you a way to, to do something else. But I specifically, a couple of things. When we're looking at the number of teachers, so the medical requests, there was thirty-six of those. Um, and I was just curious, I mean, have, and I know you have said a couple of times that you, you know, the committee or whoever HR has not responded to them yet based on the timing, but wouldn't it be possible to at least indicate to them whether their requests can be met and started at a certain time? Once, once the face-to-face or the change, um, occurs so that they're not sitting in limbo and waiting.
Dr. Hubbard and I talked about that today, and, and he's developing now a process uh, to give more information to those, uh, staff members who have requested, uh, online for medical reasons. And so he's going to be sending out that information to them.
Great.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, I think it's important that they know. Um, it's very stressful for everybody as, as indicated. Emmen, and then, excuse me, of the one-hundred-and-seventy-two online requests that were honored, um, and you did the pie chart, you know, looking at high-risk preference and, and whether it's a, you know, need for, um, care being provided. Um, I was just curious as to decision-making for those. I mean, obviously, um, some of that might be based on, you know, whether we need more people in the buildings. But are decisions being made based on the fact that they were asked why they answered that way? I was just curious. Or was this more of a, a subjective, we're curious as to, to why you answered that way?
Well, we wanted to have more information so that we could make an informed decision. By all means, if someone has a medical condition or they're in a high-risk category, they may not have a medical condition, but could be in a high-risk category according to the CDC. We wanted to know that information so that we're trying to honor the best situation for all of our employees so they can feel safe and, and can teach in the best manner possible. That's why we had that question left with open-ended, um, answers to be able to give us more data on that as we, um, compiled all that together.
Okay, thank you for that. Madam Chair, I have some other comments, but if you wanted to direct this elsewhere.
Uh, no, it's all, the floor is yours.
Okay. Well, I, I just, um, like you, I, and, and probably other board members, but I am concerned about the, um, the comments and just the asynchronous time, um, you know, and, and that the models, you know, might drive, um, an increase in that time. So I'm, I'm concerned. Drive and increase in that time. So I'm I'm concerned. For and the the instruction, I guess, the quality of instruction and what that might mean to and for our students. So. With that being said, I'm just curious if, you know, extending time. For the middle school and the high school to to kind of look at how that instruction, similar to what you were saying, Madam Chair, to. Be delivered, if that wouldn't be worthwhile. And then I was also curious, and and I know that Dr. Atkins had said, you know, the action that you were asking for tonight was whether or not. We support. Moving forward just for preparation for these plans. So I interpreted that is that we're not necessarily. Taking action on the specific plans tonight, but whether or not there would be the possibility of. Taking action on them separately. So the elementary schools being one action item, and if we're not comfortable with with. What or how the instruction is is being modeled for the middle school and high school, if we could look at that differently.
Ms. Torres, that that's exactly right. We want to give the board as much information as you need to make the decision. What we're asking is that you give us permission to continue to prepare to open. And as you feel comfortable in making the decision to say, yes, we are, we will be prepared to respond. And open the schools, and you may do it by level. You may do it as an entire school division, but as you said, approaching it by level could certainly work also.
Great, thank you. I think that's all I have to say right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I particularly like the idea of the level. Because again, what Ms. Stein said about, you know, not acting as a monolith, I think we do have some, I mean, as as a kind of overwhelming as it is. As as a as a whole, like because we are relatively small, we do have some flexibility or nimbleness. Like, I don't want to assume nimbleness, but I definitely think we have. Room for some flexibility. And I think Ms. Stein, well, somebody sent us an email about. You know, how we, you know, we didn't really rank. Give rank choices, which, you know. Is neither here nor there, but it maybe that would have been helpful. I mean, I look at Greenbrier's numbers. Specifically that, you know, Ms. Chuck sent along with what Dr. Hubbard said, and I'm kind of concerned because we have like seventy percent or more wanting to be in school. And I looked at the teachers and, you know, it's it's. It's a math issue. That's why I went to law school, but not to do math, but, you know, it is. It is like, okay, that is going to take a little bit of work there to figure out how to, you know, do that. And. Do that in a way that is most on, but I think there are Greenbrier parents who would say, oh, well, if, you know. My child is fine where she is right now, and if you need a little bit more time. You know, you should have it, Greenbrier. And I mean, we definitely saw emails like that. Because parents felt very boxed in by the choices. So. That might be like individually as a, you know, elementary school can, maybe they do their own. Kind of granular, not, I mean, survey slash. You know, whatever it is that they need, how to get the information and make it work, because I don't want to assume that all the parents who said that they want to go back face to face. Are need to go back to face to face, but that they might be willing to accommodate. The the school division by staying home if they could do this virtual program still. So I just, I think there's just a lot of flexibility there. I do love the idea of trying to get back to elementary school by January eleventh, at least in the phased approach where we do orientations. If the numbers are good relatively. You know, before that. So how would we like to move forward, Board? Dr. Kraft?
Well, yeah, the way I'm feeling now. What I'd be, you know, I'm comfortable with the idea of. You know, affirming or voting to continue working on these preparations. With the understanding that we're not, we're not locking ourselves into, you know, exactly what the model looks like right now. My, I have a lot of concerns about the asynchronous learning, the big increase in asynchronous learning. For Buford and the high school. And it just, you know, thinking about these students having three days of nine to four in front of a screen. Really doesn't seem sustainable. And, you know, I'm really worried about both the. You know, the quality of instruction, but also just maintaining student engagement. So I, you know, I I would love.
Want to interrupt you for one second and say like, what, I think the nine to four thing is actually when it's synchronous.
Well, I thought I heard that it was for the kids who were virtual, that it would also be nine to four.
Fair enough, fair enough. But it would be three days a week of asynchronous.
Yeah.
All students.
Yes, yes. And then for the, yes, that's right. So anyway, I, you know, I just, I'm hoping that we can continue to take a look at that. And, you know, see, you know, I don't, I don't have the answers myself, but. To me, that takes us back to last spring when, you know, the quality of of what was happening wasn't real good. You know, and we were all scrambling and, you know, we've done so much work to. Provide quality instruction and. You know, anyway, I I'm hoping that we can continue to just take a look at that issue. And, you know, be creative and maybe think out of the box a little bit more. But, you know, given that, you know, I'm certainly willing to support the division moving forward to make these plans and make these preparations.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions before we move forward? Dr. Atkins, can I ask about the transportation? Do you want us to? How do you want us to talk? Is there any action you would like us to take tonight about that?
Garland, help us out with that. What action? When will you need to enter into the contract? How much lead time will you need to enter into the contract to be able to respond to our student needs?
So going back to, I thank you, Dr. Atkins. Part of what we are wanting to be able to do is have that three weeks to negotiate the contract. So whenever you give me a definitive date, you need to, I need to, you know, kind of work backwards from there.
So you need a minimum of three weeks before we open in order to negotiate the contract?
I need a minimum of four weeks. I need three weeks. I need three weeks for the contract and a week for the actual in person. So I need a month.
So Ms. McKeever, where we stand now is that the families who said they cannot arrive at school without bus transportation. We can accommodate all of those families. If we want to move into accommodating the families who are asked to say they would like to have transportation. We would need to enter into the contract, have contract drivers to supplement our drivers in order to be able to do that. So four weeks lead time for contract drivers. And Garland, anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, part of what we're, we've been able to continue to kind of. Hold on to the contractors. And, you know, we're not the only ones who are asking for drivers. My concern is, as we continue to kick this can down the road. They may start to drop off. We may not have the luxury of having those, that, you know, that that fifteen or twenty drivers that we had thought we were going to, because now they're going to other places. So as soon as we can make a decision, then we can actually get to the contract and we can actually solidify our numbers that that would just help us make sure that we. Have the the numbers that you need to get all of those students into the schools.
And Ms. McKeever, the other thing is you are running into holiday time, and that affects that thirty days that he needs. You've got. One week next week where you've got three days out, then you've got, I'm sorry, I don't mean to offend anybody. You have the Christmas holiday, or you can call it the holiday break. I'm a Christian, so I call it Christmas. So I don't mean to offend anyone. But you've got at least two weeks in that timeframe, maybe three. Where nothing is happening because people are closed for the holiday. So if Mr. Williams is saying he needs a month. And we are looking at a tentative date of January eleventh, then. You are already at November nineteenth.
My, my concern, Ms. Purrier, is that we're going to enter into a contract for four hundred thousand dollars that we never use because we're never going back to school.
I understand. I understand. I I understand that completely.
And we do not have the need to do it because the numbers of families who do not, who cannot get their kids to school. Is below the number that Mr. Williams can actually provide right now.
But we also haven't heard from all of our families. Did we just not hear earlier from? Ms. Chuck, that they are still reaching out to families because information is still coming in. And so you may hit your threshold between now and the first of the month. I have no way of knowing. I mean, I understand. Four hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. I got it. But what I am saying is, we are like. In a very precarious, you know, we may need five drivers, we may need ten, we may need twenty. So I don't know how many you pick, but the longer we wait. The fewer people we have to contract with if we need them. So maybe we err on the side of caution and do ten. Mr. Williams said he had initially thought twenty, based on what he heard tonight, he said fifteen. So I don't know, maybe you just do ten. I, I don't know, four hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. But I do know that if between now and the end of the month, we have. Over four hundred children that need to get on that bus, and we don't have anybody to take them, then what do we do?
Well, also, I mean, I honestly think that we, you know, there's a lot of leeway and 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 a little bit of cushion in those numbers from the buses, those bus numbers. And I think what we could do is say, instead of nineteen weeks, we're going to need fourteen weeks. And we're going to start busing more kids at, you know, on March eleventh or March fifteenth or whatever. So that saves us a little money, also provides us a little bit more room in terms of. Of like when school starts. So I, you know, I want to be an optimist. I want to provide bus transportation for everybody. But I also feel like we have to be good stewards. And 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 just understand that the limitations are there.
Right. And I'm sure that in negotiating the contract, Mr. Williams understands that. If schools are unable to open, there may be a fee that we have to pay because we, you know, cannot fulfill the contract. But at least we would know that the people are there. I mean, the fee wouldn't be four hundred thousand dollars if for some reason. The first of January, the governor decides everybody has to go back to where we were in March. I mean. Those things are understood, and I think that if he has the appropriate lead time, he can, in his contract. Negotiate certain things based on the uncertainty of this disease. So maybe instead of twenty people, he asks for ten. Maybe instead of nineteen weeks, he asks for fifteen weeks. But I think if he has flexibility to do that. Then we will be the beneficiaries of having a plan B and saving money and being good stewards of our funds as well.
So what happens if we contracted them, or we give them the green light to go with ten, but we never need them, and those ten people are just sitting around in limbo waiting? And miss out on other job opportunities in that timeframe? Is that how that would potentially work, Mr. Williams?
Yes. Unfortunately, when we sign the contract, we're going to be on the hook for whether it's five, ten, fifteen drivers, whatever the number is. And we're going to reach to a fifteen week period of time, because remember, we're not the only ones, the jurisdictions that are asking for drivers. We're asking for them to. Take care of an emergency situation for us right now. And part of that is, they've negotiated what they think is a reasonable. We're in the process of negotiations, but they think they put on a table what they believe to be a reasonable amount of money, meaning the twenty five dollars. And not covering in the benefit components to allow us to have an opportunity to get these drivers.
I mean, I have concern.
A little. I'm sorry. So I would also say. I have Sherry. On this part, she's been able to do is kind of be my eyes and ears with the contractor. And they're, we're in the negotiation kind of piece right now. We're not formally in negotiations because we haven't, we haven't started the negotiation process, but we're talking through that model with them.
Sharon? Oh, I'm sorry. May I ask a question?
So I just wanted to let you guys know that we, we currently are using every driver we have to drive the students that we are transporting now. So without extra help, even getting the three hundred and eighty three students to school is going to be a struggle because we carry. We have ten routes going every day plus the five lunch routes. And those are for drivers that are twenty and thirty hour employees. When we start back in January, we're going to be working people ten to twelve hours a day just to get everybody to all the models that we have. We have put forth to you all. So it's going to be important that you understand that what we have now and what we're working with is still going to be going at that same time when January comes. So we're going to need bodies.
I love your optimism of January.
Yeah, I mean, part of the thing that I, we didn't want to talk through all of the 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 exact numbers, but. Right now, we're transporting fifty eight year students with special needs to thirteen different schools, right? So we're already using ten vehicles, nine of them buses. And one van that goes actually to Richmond every single day right now. And that's kind of the numbers that Sherry's talking through. We don't have the luxury of having additional bodies anymore right now. Some of the individuals we thought were going to come back did not come back because of COVID. They were concerned about their own individual health. I understand, I get it. What we have right now is an opportunity to to get a contract and who can help us get some some staff to alleviate the pressure. And that's what we're really trying to do.
Dr. Atkins, was there any cares money that was set aside for transportation, or maybe Mr. Williams, was there cares money?
And I'll answer that we do have, we'll be looking at, at the board votes to move forward with negotiating a contract. Then we'll be looking at cares dollars in order to cover that.
Okay, so that was a very helpful, Ms. Gubanks. Thank you for jumping on there. I think, you know, understanding what is actually happening right now. And how the, you know. That we in fact need bodies if we're going to be transporting any more students, literally any more students, it sounds like. And, okay, so. I think we should kind of come around to what we want to take action on tonight as a board. And so I would. You know, I, you know, I have virtually no problems, humbly. Suggesting that our elementary schools work with their families for reopening as soon as June, January eleventh. You know, I, you know, give if the numbers, you know, say so at the December nineteenth meeting, and if we need to call any other meetings before school opens. I just feel like in particular, pre K three. But, you know, that's not what Dr. Atkins has proposed, like the the committee said, you know, elementary schools. So. My, we could do this whole thing, like we could vote as a package, or we could vote individually as like levels. And then I would like to also do the transportation piece too, kind of individually, if that would be okay. Unless somebody has a better idea.
Dr. Atkins, what what would you most want from us at this juncture?
So I, I've heard the board talk about many different scenarios and scenarios now that look different from uh, the COVID advisory committee recommendations. Uh, I'm not opposed to those scenarios, but they do deviate from what the committee has recommended. Um, so I'd like the board to frame those thoughts. Uh, what does it, what are you talking about with elementary schools? Um, what grade level specifically would you be talking about? And I'd certainly like to get it back before our advisory committee, uh, to get input from them. Um, we, we task them with the, um, the task of giving us input, and we certainly do want to have their input on any additional models that we put forward. So what would be best right now is if the board is moving towards, and we, none of us have a crystal ball, if they're moving, uh, towards opening in January, um, that we get direction from the board as to what grade levels you're thinking about. And, um, giving us, um, a yes to continue planning to open for those grade levels, whatever grade levels those might be. And, and we do need to address the transportation issue.
I, I want to say that, I, I don't know that we're actually suggesting anything other than what the model says, uh, or what, you know, the timeframe that they, um, that the committee provided. Um, maybe we just want to look at the high school and the secondary level a little bit more closely with respect to the schedule. Um, because we want to minimize asynchronous time. Um, and just give a little bit more flexibility to the principals and the teachers in the building to limit that and, you know, what, how we, please, that they can go back to the drawing board about. But I don't know that we are looking at a different timeline than the committee had proposed, except for the change that you made, which was a week earlier. Um.
Yeah, so, but I, I think the flexibility would be to let the, um, principals and teachers, you know, give them the freedom to do it, not us getting together or, you know, trying to determine it. I mean, I, I'm prepared to, to vote as a package to allow them to look at a January opening, and if things change, then we will act accordingly. I mean, I think that at some point, we can't keep studying. We have to take action. I mean, we could come back at the next meeting and I could literally see us telling them to do some more studying to look at. We have to, at some point, say, this is, you know, we're, we're going to continue to look at the numbers from the health department. Beth is on top of that, but I, you know, we, we have to, we have to make a decision at some point. And I think that shooting for a, um, January opening is that I'm prepared to do. So I, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, just to be clear, because I don't want anybody to, um, think differently. The timeline is not January for all schools. It is, so what I suspect that Mr. Wade was saying is like, what the superintendent recommends is what he's prepared to vote on, which is a February first for the high school, um, and Buford, I think. And, um, for Walker and the elementary schools, January eleventh, kind of phased approach. I, I just want to have our turn.
That's what it is. Yes, yes, starting in January, yes.
Yep, that's what it is.
So, um, great. I, the only issue that I have, well, I have two. One is asynchronous is too much at this, in my opinion. I don't necessarily think that I want to be in charge of that as a board. That's, I don't think, but I, I do think it would be problematic if there was three days a week at the high school, um, and at Buford of asynchronous learning. And to the extent that we want to, you know, we, we say we approve of this model that, and timeline that you're suggesting, Dr. Atkins, I, I don't want that to be part of it. Like, so I don't know how to take that.
Can we, can we approve the timeline now? Um, you know, and, and then, um, you know, maybe we can make a different kind of statement if, if we want uh, the seven through twelve to continue to work on the mod, on the model to perhaps reduce the asynchronous learning. Um, but I, I think again, you know, like what Juan was saying, I think we need to, um, give the principals and teachers the flexibility to just continue to work on that. And I think they've heard our concerns. So if we want to say, yes, we, you know, we can go ahead and approve the timeline, um, you know, that's been proposed. I feel comfortable doing that, that we approve that, um, you know, given the health statistics as of right now, and knowing that those may change. So maybe that would be one step we could take. So we approve the, you know, continuing the preparations, uh, toward the, um, return to face-to-face mo, the timeline for return to face-to-face.
You're, you're approving the, um, model that the COVID committee has presented for planning. And then, and then we will have to have another motion as it relates to transportation.
Yes.
Because if you don't approve for them to plan, then the COVID committee has met for nothing and no planning will ever take place. I'm with, with Juan on that one.
I don't think that anybody on this board wants to halt the planning and preparation for returning back to school. I just want to be clear about that.
And Ms. McKeever, if the board gives the nod to continue with the planning, um, as we work towards January eleventh and February first, um, it will have, you will have an, another opportunity on December sixteenth to come back and give additional guidance if you'd like to. Uh, based on the metrics or any other information that you might receive, we may be able to bring back some additional information about the asynchronous learning at the secondary level at that time to give more clarity to that.
Okay. Um, so I, so the, so we heard from a lot of parents, I, about the, um, the way they felt boxed in by the survey. And to the extent that principals are free to work with their families to serve them, I would like that to be part of the conversation in that community. So that's my, like, if somebody said that they were face-to-face, but like now there's not enough teachers to do for, you know, at one particular school, is there going to be, you know, that particular school, can they say, go back to their families and say, is there anybody who can go back to virtual? Like, that's, I think, a question that came up a lot in the many emails I responded to.
And I think that's a reasonable request. I, I, we've always said that we will handle individual cases. But in order to plan for transportation, to make a master schedule, to assign teachers, we have to know who's going to be faced in person and who has elected to be continued with virtual. Um, the high school, that schedule is complex and they need that information. And Buford in order to move forward, all of our schools will need that information. But working with our families on an individual basis is a part of what, uh, we have committed to do and, and will follow through with.
I guess my, I mean, I want elementary schools to start. Um, and, you know, to the extent that we have enough teachers, I just don't want to have to get to a situation where HR has to tell a teacher, like, I need you back in the class or you need to resign. Um, and, you know, that is, I just don't want that. I want us to work with families to say, we understand that you said that you were face-to-face. Is that what you continue to want to do? Because I think there are some families who would say, we're fine with continuing virtual if they were asked again a follow-up question. Um, so that's, I mean, there's just a lot of heartburn and I, and I know that the whole community is suffering. There's a lot of heartburn on every heart, including Mr. Wade, who wants to just move on. But so, I, I, I just, I feel like some of these things just need to be very, you know, we just need to be super transparent about. And I, I'm, I just want to, you know, acknowledge all of those hardships and, and, and decisions.
I think it's important that we let all of our staff members know that we don't want any teachers resigning. Um, COVID will not last forever. We're going to get through this. It's a difficult time for everyone, and there are a lot of adjustments that we're all having to make. But we want to make this as clear and transparent as possible. We don't want to lose any of our teachers. We want them to stay. We want to work with our staff, keep them on board with us. We have great teachers. We have great staff. We need them. We want them on board. And so we'll have lots of individual conversations trying to make those matches and meet the needs of not only our staff, but also for our families.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and entertain any motions or if there's any more for discussion.
I have one more comment, sorry, Madam Chair. Um, and not muddy waters, but this is probably what this is going to do. Um, I mean, my understanding with the, the COVID committee was that, you know, we were asked, or they were asked, um, to come up with plans based on a return to face-to-face. And, and so that's what they did, and they did tremendous work. Um, and put a lot of thought into it and their specialty and their knowledge of, of what, you know, what could work and what couldn't work. So, um, again, kudos to, to all of that that went into that. But again, I, I can't help but wonder, and, and we heard and received so many emails from people who, um, if they had been given the option of, we'd rather stay all virtual at the high school and Buford level, um, we'd do that right now. And it wasn't, it wasn't an option and there was nowhere to really um, free-form that into that survey. And so I, I'm in by no means asking anybody to send out another survey, but I guess that, that concerns me and, and, you know, and would love that to be considered or part of a discussion somewhere with, with your staff or whoever is appropriate to see if that may, might not be the answer to, you know, the, the increased synchronous time and, and instruction and, and quality that a lot of parents are, are needing and wanting for their students. And I'd love to hear the student perspective on that as well.
Ms. Torres, we have had the conversation, um, Dr. Iris Ari and, and a team to talk about what might it look like to run a face-to-face school with teachers assigned to teach, uh, in person, and then run a virtual school with te, separate teachers assigned to, um, teach virtually. Um, Eric, Eric, uh, shuddered when I, 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 we even brought that up. And, and he just, it was the complexity of all of it and having enough teachers to assign a chemistry teacher, for instance, face-to-face, and a chemistry teacher that could handle a load virtually. Uh, the complexities of that are, are pretty enormous. It sounds like it would be ideal because each group then would have their set of teachers, uh, could, to continue to teach in the model that works best for them and with a, a schedule and a timeline that works best for families. Um, Eric took a look at that, and I know Jesse did also. And, and I, Eric, uh, is there any possibility that that could happen?
No, um, not at the high school. And I just want to be clear. And, and I was shuddering because I hate to say no. And I, you know, it, it's, you know, when I, when, when I look at items, it's really hard to, you have teachers that teach individual sections. You have, you have, every student's schedule is so unique at the high school. And we're the only high school. Um, we have two, you know, two and a half chemistry teachers. We have, uh, one orchestra teacher, one band. A student that comes in to the building, they're going to need to see all of, you know, those teachers for that day. There's not a way to run a concurrent master schedule. The, the master schedule takes month, you know, months to, to develop in, in the first place to make sure students get their most of their first choices in their electives. Uh, with our AP and dual enrollment classes, we don't have multiple teachers for many of those classes. Our fine and performing arts, our engineering, um, we only, many, many of those, we only have one teacher. So I, I, I do hear the concern for the asynchronous, and we could look to see if there are ways around that. But, um, unlike an elementary school, which a teacher can teach kindergarten to sixth grade, and they can teach in multiple buildings if they needed to, or consolidate into a, you know, a virtual classroom at the high school and, and at Bu, you know, and at Buford, um, that's, it's impossible to do that. Now, we can look at timing and we can look at the variables that, you know, try to, try to move things, but there is a give and take. So decreasing the amount of asynchronous time, um, you know, you need to increase face-to-face time. And if you do that, you know, you're up against the constraints of the social distancing in the classrooms themselves and, and the safety concerns we have in the building. So, you know, I, I believe the, the COVID committee, they, they took a look at that and we can always, I'm, you know, I can get my team back together and we can take a look at it again, but there are going to, you know, I do want to be transparent. There are going to be constraints when it comes to what that looks like with the master schedule at the high school and, and to the Buf, into Buford. I don't want to speak for Jesse, but for the most part, he's under the same, same constraints with licensure and, um, with, um, the select classes that we offer at both schools as well. So, um, I don't know if that answered the question, but I, I'm happy to go back and look at it again, have a team poke holes in it and just see it, you know, is there any give and take? But, um, there's not going to be a whole lot of flexibility. Um, we can stay where we are, um, but if we do move to a hybrid model, that will fundamentally change the way instruction is delivered or the timing that instruction is delivered at the high school.
Ms. Kedari, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, yes, so I have a quick question. So I'm a little confused about like, um, so let's say, for example, the results of the votes end up for high school to be like in-person or vice versa, whatever. And the result of like the elementary school ends up, more people voting to stay, um, virtual. Is it possible for schools to have, um, to be different than like, like the other ones, or do they all have to be like the same? I don't know if I put the question.
I mean, the recommendation itself is different. Like right now, the high school and Wa, and Buford would be on February first according to the timeline and recommendation, while the elementary school would be January eleventh. So there are, and like, so the schedules are different, like there are differences and it can be different um, per, with the buildings. Although, like, you want to kind of keep the elementary on the same kind of wavelength as, you know, as one another.
Yeah, but I, I, what I'm asking is like, let's say for elementary school, the votes end up being to stay virtual. Now, will the high school, like, are you guys going to vote for each school? Because like, let's say for elementary, they, you guys decide to, um, to keep it like in virtual, uh, to stay in virtual. But then for high school, would they have a different, like, are you going, are you guys going to vote for that too? Or is it going to be a whole?
So that's the part of the question, like, is, that we're trying to work out with this discussion. I, I, I think that's an accurate reflection, right?
Well, right now, oh, sorry. But we're, we're just voting to continue planning, right? We're not planning and transportation.
Yes.
So at this point, it feels like we can move forward with the planning portion because we're not approving it and it's not finalized. We're just getting something so that teachers and administrators and principals have a starting point to plan.
I think what Dr. Atkins would also like us to do is identify the timeline as what we're planning towards. If that makes sense. Does that resonate? Is that clear?
It is. That's correct. Uh, we're planning it. My request is that we're planning to, uh, for January eleventh and February first, knowing that the board still has December sixteenth to come back and make any adjustments that it, it would like to on that timeline. And on the, the, um, the model for the different levels.
Okay, so I'm accepting motions or further points for discussion?
So I, I would like to make a motion that we, um, give, um, gotten permission for staff to plan for a January eleventh, February first timeframe with the ability to come back on December the, the sixteenth to make changes to that plan.
I'd like to second that.
Any other comments or questions about that? Thoughts? Okay. So I think, yeah, okay, so I have real concerns and continue to have concerns about the asynchronous learning at Beaufort in the high school. I would rather them continue to be virtual than go to that model. So that is, that is an issue that I have. Like you cannot tell me that an eighth grader can sit for three days a week in asynchronous learning. It's just not, I mean, some of them can. But we all know that every child is different. So that is my sincere concern. I want, I a hundred percent support the, the model at the elementary school and Walker. I would like to support the February 1st timeline for return to school for Beaufort and the high school if the numbers hold up, if we could come up with a better model. And I understand the limitations.
Could, could we just go ahead and vote now on, on the motion that's on the floor?
I, I, you know, I just, I feel like, again, we do have flexibility. We are small enough to be able to solve the problem and not have three days of asynchronous learning. I mean, if you come back and tell me that Loudoun County and, and other schools, like every division is doing this, fine. I'm only one person on one board, fine. But I really want to do something different.
Can we move forward with the planning with the caveat that in December the, will return and they will report how, how they can cut down on the asynchronous days just for the planning? You know, can we do that?
That's what, that's what Juan's motion was, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Just wondering, Dr. Atkins, you had mentioned, I mean, can, I'm sorry, can we, can we bring this part of it back to the COVID committee?
Yes, we can reconvene that committee.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts? Okay. So we'll go ahead and call the vote on that motion, on Mr. Wade's motion and Mr. Bryant's second. Which is to continue planning for the January 11th and February 1st in return to, in, in school, in face-to-face learning. Ms. Green?
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Craft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just to work with the bus situation. So I'm also entertaining those motions.
Can we compromise on the number since it's a gamble and that's a lot of money? I know Ms. Purrier had said we could go with 10 or maybe we could go with eight. Because it's a lot of money if we don't use.
Do we, do we have to be specific now with that? Do we have to approve a motion with that much specificity as to the number of drivers? Now, or can we approve a process?
I would ask you to approve a process and let me work with Mr. Williams and, and he worked with his team to determine the minimum amount of drivers that he would need to accommodate our needs.
Okay.
I'd like to make that motion, what she said.
And I'll second Sherri's motion.
Any other comments or questions? I just want to say to parents, thank you so much for everything that you did getting those intent forms in about the transportation. I think it's like really important information for, for us to know and for the, for the staff to know moving forward so that we could better plan. So thank you for all of that. So hearing no further comments, I'll go ahead and ask Ms. Green to call a vote.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Craft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever? Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Thank you.
One other thing that had been mentioned multiple times is a threshold level for the COVID numbers. I don't want to not have that conversation, even though I understand from staff's perspective that they will be working with the CDC guidelines and the health department to ascertain when they should close. And that we will not be using, you know, statewide or national numbers. We'll be using very local numbers about that. But I wanted to make sure that if there was some proposal or recommendation or thought about what should be included in that discussion, this would be a good time to mention it.
Would that be something that the COVID committee can discuss and bring back to us if they're going to be reconvening? Then they could bring that back to us for our December meeting?
The COVID committee talked at length about this. There are very significant variables. And, you know, even now, you look at our percent positivity rate and then, you know, as soon as we do that, we get an email from somebody who says, well, without UVA, this is what our numbers look like. So it is, if you're, you know, getting a 50-person member, you know, for a 50-member committee to agree on metrics is going to be a challenge. It would be a challenge amongst the seven of us. So I, I just want to be realistic and use the time of the committee wisely and efficiently. If there was like, you know, so, I mean, if Dr. Atkins thinks that there's people, you know, she could convene, you know, specific people to identify metrics, that would be, you know, I welcome that, but I also don't want to take time away from planning reopening.
Ms. McKeever, we'll bring you at the December 2nd meeting. I'll work with Dr. Baptist and we'll have a matrix for you.
Perfect.
Dr. Baptist, did you want to add anything to that?
The only thing, you know, that, that I would add is, again, with the standardization that we've got at 100,000, we're going to have to get down to about four or five cases over a two-week period to totally get us in the green way the standardization is set up. That is not going to happen likely for a long time. So we need to use the, the numbers as a guide and, but then also look at trends otherwise. Leslie has shared with you the chart that I have been doing since and doing it every day since we started doing this back in August. And if you look, the positivity rate was higher and has gone down. It was higher in September and we have watched it go down. So how does UVA affect in that? I don't know, because UVA was in the numbers for part of the time. So we have to look at that, but we can't use it as a total guide. And I don't think we can wait until the first column gets down into the green to reopen school because I think that will be a long time, just because of the standardization factor.
I don't think that that is, I don't think that people on the board are suggesting that, just for your information. Like, I don't, I see that number and I, but I do think, like, understanding the role that UVA has in our local numbers is, is relevant. So whatever you can come up with is great, like, it just as a benchmark for us would be very helpful, I think. Anybody else have any comments about that? Cool, cool. Any other comments or do you need anything else from us, Dr. Atkins?
No, I think we are ready to move forward or continue moving forward.
Well, thank you for, again, I know these are hard decisions and your team has been extraordinary. Really, even during incredibly difficult conversations, exceptionally professional and very just so well-versed. So you and your team are to be commended for their hard work. And I know that on the ground level, like the teachers and the principals of building, everybody's been doing such an extraordinary job and I know that a lot of teachers are, I mean, just, there's so many conflicting things happening, so I want to be respectful of everything, but thank you for everybody's, all your hard work and hopefully we can wear our masks and wash our hands, get our flu shot, stay socially distanced and be really respectful of that our health is the community's health. And we need to protect our community. So at, just the only way schools open is if we keep ourselves healthy. Please do that.
Ms. McKeever, I'd like to commend our community. Because we, we in Charlottesville, we, it seems like when you look at the, the state of Virginia, we're in a bubble right now. And I think it's because wearing a mask in Charlottesville has become the norm. And Charlottesville citizens have just embraced wearing the mask and social distancing and that has kept our numbers low. So safety is on everyone's mind and just to commend the community for, for making that happen. It would not have happened without everyone working together to practice all of the guidelines the CDC has recommended.
Here, here. So is it okay if we move on to the next item on the agenda? Board members? Okay. So we're going to go, move on to the second comments from members of the community. We welcome comments from members of the community and we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. And Mr. Cuomo, who do we have? Now is the time to raise your hand in the chat or, I mean, note in the chat or raise your hand.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. Yeah, we have a few people who would like to speak and I will just read the names in order. Siobhan Saul will be first, then Beth Icke and Angel Fero and I will unmute Siobhan. Oh, that name disappeared. Let's see. No, there's Siobhan there. Siobhan is first.
Okay, you have three minutes. Ms. Saul, thank you so much for joining us.
Okay, thank you. I'm Siobhan Saul and I live at 2620 Avinity Place. I live in the county, but I'm lucky to teach at Charlottesville High School. Thank you, Dr. Atkins, Madam Chair, board members, families, teachers and staff. In preparing for the possibility of being approved for telework, I'm most concerned about the relationships built with students. What considerations are being made in the event that a telework request is approved and some of my students have chosen the in-person option? Will another colleague be responsible for teaching my students? Will colleagues have to watch my students and my students still log into my Zoom? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saul.
I'm next. We have Beth Icke.
Hey, Ms. Icke, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm following up on Ms. McKeever's comments, I think, about the sort of shifting path ahead. I guess everyone's comments. I also expect the rise in national and state cases to begin to show itself more locally as much as I agree and commend our community as Dr. Atkins did. I think locally, as we move towards January, especially after the holidays, I worry about what the numbers are going to look like. We definitely heard from some folks who indicated on the binding intent form that they would return it in person so that they would preserve the possibility to do so later if numbers were bad so that we wouldn't return at first, but then maybe they'd be able to do so later. I was someone who answered that I would not return because I was told it was a binding intent form and felt like I could not send my child, couldn't picture sending my child back in January. I would hope that should the board have to make the tough choice anytime before or after December 16th, that the going to in-person instruction is not possible until later this spring, I would hope that the administration and the board would not hold families to the decision we were asked to make in November. If January comes and this board has to vote to continue virtual learning for the next quarter, I would ask that families also be given the chance to weigh in and the flexibility to make a new choice at the next opportunity to return in person. Thank you all for your hard work. I really appreciate it.
Ms. Icke?
Next, we have Angel Fero.
Hi, Ms. Fero. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, board. Thank you so much again for all the work that you all are doing. I really appreciate it. I especially appreciate Ms. Kadari being here as a student and just her unique perspective. I just want to second Ms. McKeever's comments on possibly looking at the option of looking at things separately in terms of our elementary students versus some of our older students. I am someone who's on the front lines and seeing elementary students every day and their ability to access virtual learning. We are seeing, you know, tears and heads down at the, the, the prospect of getting on the computer. Just a lot of stress on the children. Questioning the developmentally appropriateness of, you know, two to three hours of virtual time on a computer every day for young children. And so I would very much second what she said about looking at it in terms of elementary students, our youngest students and then looking at older students for maybe a different possibility, different plans. So, and also continuing to look at the data in terms of, you know, the ability of young children to spread the virus as opposed to what the numbers look like for older children. So again, thank you so much for all the work that you all are doing. I so appreciate it. This, this is extremely hard and I understand that. And I want all of the children to be safe. But I do also know that there are several families, parents who have, you know, quit their jobs because they have to be home to support their children with virtual learning and it's just a very difficult and complicated situation. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fero. Appreciate everything that you're doing to support our families. Who do we have next, Mr. Cuomo?
Right now, that is everybody in the chat or everybody in the attendees list. So if there's a given amount of time you want to give, I'll, I'll leave it to you, but nobody else has raised their hand at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll go ahead and give a few seconds here. If anybody would like an opportunity to speak, this would be a great time to raise your hand or indicate so in the chat.
And we do have, we do have one other person who's raised their hand. The display name is Jen Otner.
Ms. Ms. Otner, if that's your name, then you have three minutes.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you all for the hard work you're doing as well and echo some of the concerns of my fellow parents. I'm at 1217 Meriwether. I have students in Burnley Moran and Walker and completing that intent form was highly stressful for me. I don't feel like as a community, we have the information today to make a binding decision about January. Needless to say, I made a decision. Echoing Beth's comments, I would like an opportunity, should we postpone that opening to reevaluate our decisions and you know, I appreciate the teachers. I'm, I'm, you know, I know that they're going to be doing most of the mitigation, the administration and the teachers and I, as a child of parents myself, I really feel like it's asking a lot of them in any circumstance right now. And then my final concern is really about the change in instructional staff. Essentially, I decided my daughter should go back to school because if she were going to have a teacher change in January, that changed virtually. The time it has taken her to build a relationship with her teacher, it would be like starting from zero again. So that does concern me on a daily basis, what that would look like if they were going to change teachers and be virtual. I know it's not an easy decision for any of you and I do appreciate the time you put into it. But I would hope for some flexibility or, you know, the ability to consider some of these out-of-the-box dilemmas. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Otner, I appreciate your, your comments. Anybody else, Mr. Cuomo?
Yes, attendee display name is April Gatewood.
Ms. Gatewood, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. I actually took place in the advisory board. And I know everybody that was part of it put in a lot of work and a lot of hours and trying to come up with the best plan to move the children forward into getting back to school and return to school. I was just asked when we reconvene in December for the school board meeting that at that time, we continue to focus on trying to get them back to school if it is safe to do so. And, you know, because there's going to be a lot of things, there's no going to be, there's not going to be a plan that fits all regarding the students, even at the high school level. Because we've looked at all of it. So I would really hope that you would take the advisory board's recommendations to heart at the next meeting. And that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gatewood. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else, Mr. Cuomo?
I don't see anybody else at this time in the chat. And there are no more hands raised on the participant screen.
Okay, great. So I am going to close public comment in about five seconds. So that's reasonable with everybody and see if there's anybody else who would be interested in speaking. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Thank you to everybody who made their comments. We appreciate it. And if you wanted to give the school board any feedback, our email address is schoolboard@charlottesvilleschools.org. And all that information is also on our website. And the next thing on our agenda is the board member comments. And we have been able to speak a lot, but I would love to hear if anybody has any other comments to mention. Who would like, Ms. Bryson Morrisburger, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to add to the public comment that I received. I talked to parents as well about the intent form and how they felt about it. So I would suggest since we start at nine at a time, that we do allow parents to revisit their choices because we're all being flexible and nimble here. So I would reiterate that to, that we revisit those binding agreements, you know, at a later date if numbers go down and we're face to face, it's, it's, it's easier or, you know, the numbers are going down. And then on a separate note, just personally, in the beginning of this, I was, I am still concerned about COVID and safety and all of those things. But I also want to refocus myself and the the board, excuse me, on issues of equity and just say that, you know, this plan, it's a, we're planning and it's great. But I also want there to be some planning that goes into if we end up having to be virtual because of COVID numbers, that we do a separate plan that allows for our most vulnerable students the same way there are students in the building now. I want us to have some plan in place that allows for those people who need to be in the building to be in the building, sped, English as a second language, people with internet access issues and parents that aren't able to secure or pay for childcare. Because we're hearing in the meetings each month from different groups, from the abundant life group to different parents who are struggling with the virtual. And so I just want a part of our planning to be to prioritize that group if we end up having to go all the way virtual, just that we keep that in mind for equity's sake. And then I think that was it. That was, that was all I had to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, I want to first thank everybody for all the incredibly hard work that's gone into this. And, you know, I know sometimes it's hard to deal with the board members bringing up, you know, other things and wanting to go in this direction and that direction. And appreciate your patience and tolerance for that. But I wanted to mention something just completely different, really briefly. And that is usually in the month of November, we are, we find a way to touch base with our legislators. And there's been so much going on. I know that maybe that's kind of fallen by the wayside, but I don't think it has to be in November. But it may be helpful to make sure that they're aware of, of everything that we are going through, the challenges that we're facing, just so that, you know, they, they are aware of that. So it may be something to think about if we want to at some point arrange a conversation with Sally Hudson or Creed Deeds. And that's it.
Good point. We should get in touch with them. We'll do that in our free time. Okay, Mr. Wayne, do you have any thoughts? I don't see on my screen, that's why I'm asking. I assume not.
No, no comments.
And Mr. Bryant?
Um, I just want to say to Dr. Atkins and her team, thanks for all the hard work, the COVID committee. And also our principals, Dr. Turner and Dr. Azari. I know what it's like constructing, I've never done a master schedule, but it's a lot of hard work and lots of moving parts in constructing a master schedule. I want to thank them for all their hard work, their administrative team and our great teachers for your flexibility. And I'm hoping that this is a difficult decision. As Dr. Atkins said, it's, it's not an easy time. But I'm glad we are beginning to move forward with the planning and so that we can get things moving. And also want to thank our esteemed student board member for all your wonderful and, and questions, challenging questions to make us, to keep us on our, on our toes. So thank you for all of your input as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Ms. Torres?
No comments. Thank you very much.
Ms. Purrier?
I would like to say thank you to everyone that has played a role in this, whether you are a board member, staff member, or anyone in the CCS family. Is, you may not know, the third week of November is normally the week that we are all in Richmond for the VSB A annual conference. So this is my first virtual conference ever. But in the program brochure, if I remember correctly, Dr. Atkins, one of the first place winners for the art contest is from Charlottesville City Schools. I can't remember if it's the elementary level or the middle school level. So I need to go back and look at my program. We have gotten, well, I have received a lot of text messages from people throughout the Commonwealth that were so impressed with our school board reps. So thank you, Charlottesville High School School Board reps for representing us. I mean, you're just the best ambassadors ever. And this afternoon, another one of our Charlottesville High School students, Mr. Lynch, was in a presentation as a student participant. So the Charlottesville School Division has been well represented with students. And that's what we do. That's our work. If it wasn't for the parents, we wouldn't have the students. And if it wasn't for the teachers and the parents, the students wouldn't represent us as well as they do. And I am very, very honored, proud and humble to say that I am a member of the Charlottesville City School family. And thank you for allowing me to be a part of your family. And I wish all of you a safe and healthy Thanksgiving. And I want everyone to R E S T, period.
Okay, Ms. Purrier. I've heard it loud and clear.
One more thing, can I just say one more thing that Leah reminded me of? That we actually have an award recipient right here on our screen that the VSB is part of the VSB A, the Virginia School Board Association, has awarded Juan Wade, the Advocate for Education Award, which is a statewide award. It's a really big deal. And he will be receiving it tomorrow virtually, I guess through a screen. So I'm not sure what the award is, but I'm very proud of Juan. He's just, it's just a wonderful thing and he's so deserving of this award. So.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Juan.
Congrats, Juan.
Thank you, thank you.
For representing us so well.
And be there, Juan. Be there, Juan. Be there, Juan, for the presentation.
There's a great video. Okay, so I just wanted to also give Ms. Kadari an opportunity to speak if she was, wanted to speak.
Um, I don't have any questions or anything, but I do want to say thank you so much for everything that you guys do.
Thank you, Ms. Kadari. Okay, I just wanted to ask that we put the numbers that Ms. Dr. Hubbard and Ms. Chuck sent to us on ESPN, whatever the ESB as part of the presentation, just to include it. I don't, I don't care what the format is, just I think it's relevant for the public. So I wanted to make sure that that was happening. Also, I want to say a sincere thank you to all of those who jumped in, you know, after they received a text to get on. So thank you to those folks. And, you know, to our staff who just, we ask way too much of, and thank you very much. We know that this has just been really hard and we want everybody to continue to stay safe. So Dr. Atkins, I think you're next on the agenda, your superintendent comments.
Everyone's really tired. I don't have any comments. Just thank you to everyone for everything you're doing and have a healthy and safe Thanksgiving.
Okay, well, I don't think I hear any objections. I think we, our next meeting, I think, let me get my, my thing up. Our next meeting is Wednesday, no. Our next meeting is Thursday, December 3 at 5:00 PM via Zoom. So be here. And then Wednesday, December 16, we're having a budget work session slash board meeting. So those are our next two meetings. Thank you very much. Hearing no objections. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye. Thank you so much.
Bye.
Bye, y'all.